Good evening. It's six o'clock. I'd like to call the November 5th, 2024 City Commission Meeting to order. Clerk, will you please take the role?
Mayor Adamchek?
Present.
Commissioner McCollough?
Yes.
Commissioner Opel?
Here.
Commissioner Mata?
Here.
Commissioner Minton?
Here.
Mayor, we have five commissioners present. The quorum of three has met.
Thank you. Would you please rise and join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have several recognitions this evening. If you'll give me a moment to find all my papers. Shall I stand up? First, I would like to recognize some members of city staff as well as members of our community. At the 2024 Quad State Planning Conference, held in Fayetteville, Arkansas, in early October, Manhattan received three awards. First, the Great Places in Kansas Award recognizes places of exemplary character and quality that embody a visionary planning approach. Our downtown was designated as one of the great places in Kansas, given the decades of planning, investment, and place-making, both public and private. So I would like to acknowledge Downtown Manhattan, Inc., the Community Planning Department, and our team for that award. Second, Beyond Tomorrow Downtown Plan received the Pioneer Award, recognizing creativity and innovation in using planning to meet a community need or solve a public problem. Ben Chameau and John Versu were specifically recognized for their contribution to this extraordinary planning effort. Thank you both. The third was New Horizon Award for Lance Wakurla's master report titled Creating Mixed-Income Neighborhoods Through Middle Housing Infill Development: A Case Study of St. Louis. So congratulations to the City of Manhattan, to our community development team, and to Downtown Manhattan, Inc. Round of applause. Thank you all. I'd also, we have a proclamation, and perhaps Vanessa Calley and Brandon Sokol would like to join me. Whereas dogs and cats are an integral part of the quality of life of our community, we're with approximately 14,000 pet dogs and 9,950 pet cats living in the city of Manhattan, and 89.9 million dogs and 61.9 million cats nationwide, and animal shelter employees must respond to the needs of the community, keeping animals and humans safe from harm. And animal shelters make communities better places to live, taking stray animals off the streets in out-of-harm's way. Animal shelters help both animals and people in many ways, returning lost pets to their owners, educating the public, and matching homeless animals with loving new families. And animal shelters receive important donations of money, goods, and volunteer time to assist in their important missions. And Prairie Paws Animal Shelter reflects best shelter practices with veterinary care, enrichment, and socialization programs to provide the best possible outcome for each animal in its care. The City of Manhattan is one of the kindest cities in America to homeless pets. Therefore, I, Susan Adamchek, Mayor of the City of Manhattan, Kansas, do hereby proclaim November 3rd through 9th, 2024, as Animal Shelter Appreciation Week. Thank you very much. Thank you. What we do appreciate.
Do you want to get a photo?
Sure.
I want to take a photo with Brandon. I want to hold him. All, same last words. Can I say two things?
Sure.
Thank you so much for doing this. I'm the Executive Director for Prairie Paws Animal Shelter, but Brandon Sokol is really who I want to appreciate, him and his team who run the animal shelter here in Manhattan. It's kind of sometimes a thankless thing to do, so it's really meaningful to us that we have a partnership with the City of Manhattan and that we can appreciate this stuff, because I feel like I'm the one appreciating everything that you do. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Before we enter into public comments, I would like Katie Jackson, our city attorney, to just make a few remarks regarding decorum in this chamber. Katie, can you?
Good evening. In 2022, the Commission adopted meeting procedures and rules of decorum for city meetings that balance their duty to conduct tonight's business while hearing from the public on city items. Each member of the public on the items tonight has five minutes to speak on the item when the public comment opens. You can only speak once on an item, but you can speak on more than one item. When the time clock beeps, we ask that you please stop your comments. When you come to the podium, you must state your name and your residential address, and if applicable, the organization you represent. Please also write this information on the sign-up sheet on the podium. You cannot speak until you have stated this information and signed in. We ask that you address your comments to the City Commission and not debate with the crowd. Generally, neither the Commission nor staff will answer questions that are asked from the podium. Tonight's, and the purpose of tonight's public comment is for you to share your input with the City Commission. If a commissioner has a question for you, they'll ask at the end of your comments, and you'll have two minutes to answer their question. When the mayor closes public comment on an item, no further public comment is allowed. This policy also requires everyone in the room to engage in a civil and respectful manner. Your attendance and participation is greatly appreciated. We thank you for observing these rules so that tonight's meeting can proceed effectively and efficiently.
Okay. We'll now open the meetings to public comments. First person who signed up was Mick Charney.
Mick Charney, 1420 Waterford Place. And what was the other information? Oh, I'm also a board member of the Historic Resources Board. I promised I would be back and be a little bit of a nuisance to you with regard to Sunset Cemetery, and so here I am tonight to talk a little bit about CLGs, Certified Local Governments, and how Certified Local Governments relate to the ongoing discussion about Sunset Cemetery in particular and the improvements that are proposed for it, as well as requests on the part of the HRB to nominate it for historic district status. The CLG, Certified Local Government, was established as part of the National Historic Preservation Act, which dates back to 1966. At that time, in 1966, the Preservation Act set up partnerships between the national government and state governments. And so we have a state historic preservation office in Topeka. But by 1980, it was determined that there needed to be more localized influence in terms of historic preservation matters, and so they expanded the program to partnerships going down to the local level, municipalities and cities. The rationale was to better integrate historic preservation as a consideration into local planning and decision-making at the earliest possible opportunity in that decision-making process, and that's their words, "earliest possible opportunity." And they hope to facilitate this local level of participation by the establishment of certified preservation commissions, of which we are one, the Historic Resources Board. The Historic Resources Board, under the auspices of the CLG designation, is charged to assume leadership, a leadership role, in the preservation of communities, of the community's historic sites, even before they become nominated or become listed on a historical register. And as a result, we can benefit from the expertise in Topeka at SHPO, the State Historic Preservation Office, by asking them to give us some technical advice, as well as advice on other services. For example, if we have a nomination that we'd like to go forward, we can present them first with a draft, or if we have other questions about what may or may not be appropriate revisions to or additions to building. Can you hear me?
Oh, yeah. We're just getting some feedback. You're getting...
I'm sorry. Or additions to historic properties. And so how does all this relate to Sunset Cemetery? Well, as you know, both the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, as well as the Cemetery Board, said that they would prefer to postpone the nomination of Sunset Cemetery until after repairs and improvements had been made to it. Tacit within that, and they would then go ahead and approve the nomination after these improvements. Tacit, in that opinion on their part, is the notion that, yeah, they would really kind of approve the nomination of Sunset Cemetery to be on a national register. And so what we did on the board was to go to SHPO and ask them for their advice, and essentially what they said, there was no reason why work on the cemetery, its improvements, could not go on simultaneously with a nomination process. And we asked them about matters of the improvements that were being proposed, like repair of the streets and so forth, and they said essentially that as long as you're repairing asphalt with asphalt and gravel with gravel and limestone with limestone, that it should be okay. They had concerns and objections only with regard to the placement and the design of the proposed columbaria around the base of the Paisley Tower. And so because the two other boards have tacitly approved the nomination, we believe that the HRB should be given the authority to go ahead and, even before the nomination, review the proposals being made for those improvements and repairs to the cemetery. And in order to ensure that that property maintains its historic integrity, so that when it is nominated, it will have a better chance of being listed. The chart that I've provided you with is what happens once a property is designated as a historic property. If there are changes to be made, that chart tells you what sort of level of review it's subject to. At first, it can come to the staff, and they can make a decision if they determine it's a minor change, but if it's a major review, then it would come to the whole Historic Resources Board. So I just wanted to give you an overview of how that process works. Thank you very much for your attention. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Jeremy Harmon?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on the public comment today. I'm Jeremy Harmon. I reside at 1008 Highland Ridge Drive here in Manhattan. I serve as the Community Relations Director for the Center of Hope Ministry, Manhattan's winter warming shelter, which I'm representing this evening. The ministry was started in 2021 to serve where there was a gap and has grown in the last three years, just as the need has grown. Our mission states we are committed to meeting the needs of our neighbors in the homeless community with empathy, kindness, and compassion. By providing a safe, warm place to escape the harsh winter nights, we are able to renew the hearts, minds, and souls of our neighbors, giving them hope and one more day. Hope and one more day. What could one more day mean? It may not be a question most of us ask ourselves, but for many of the homeless community, it is a recurring thought. One more day. Is it one more day to live, one day to make a difference, one day to make a different decision, to try harder than yesterday, one day to go on to work? One more day. This is Gary. He had stayed in the shelter in the past. At 50 years old, he's starting to get his life together and move beyond his troubled past. If you search for Gary Papke online, you'll find his warrants, arrest, bond, and jail sentence in August of 2023. You won't see where he was on a path to recovery and completed treatment weeks before his arrest on an old warrant, and you won't find his obituary or his cause of death. Gary died on a bitter cold night, January 22nd, 2024, literally freezing to death behind Staples here in Manhattan. While this is a tragic example of the need for a drop-in shelter here in Manhattan, there are many positive stories that we have from those that have used the shelter, which I don't have time to share, and I wish I did. I assumed my role with the Center of Hope in late August. Since then, we have been fundraising, generating awareness in the community, and diligently searching for a location that can support us in the downtown area. We believe it is vital to be in the downtown area and near where services are provided for the community, namely the common table, beable community, and public daytime facilities. While fundraising and building awareness has gone very well, our effort at securing a downtown location hasn't been successful and doesn't appear to be getting any closer as it starts to get colder. I am here to implore the city and public, join us in securing a downtown location as soon as possible. The service we provide will have a direct impact on reducing a burden to public health, public safety, public services, and public image. I invite a conversation with the directors of Riley County Police Department, Manhattan Fire Department, Riley County Emergency Management Services, and Vier Christy's Emergency Department on what that burden currently is. I further welcome an opportunity to meet with you and anyone else to provide an information brief or just a discussion on the organization and our goals. We have a webpage, thecenterofhopemhk.com, and we're on Facebook at Center of Hope MHK. Thank you for your time, your attention.
Thank you, Jeremy. Gary Olds?
I don't know what he did, but he probably fixed it. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Gary Olds. I live at 3308 Frontier Circle, and I have two things that I'm going to touch base with you on, as I have before. I'd like you to be sure that your calendars are marked for March, excuse me, March. November 21st, four o'clock, in these chambers, you have a city-county meeting between Potawatomi, I believe, and Riley and your group, Commissions. I want to remind you of that because I've asked the county commission to put on the agenda, and I would ask you to do the same, to have a discussion, hopefully a vibrant discussion, about the formation or the reformation of the Riley County Law Board. As I've mentioned before, this is your opportunity to correct what I would consider to be an injustice for the last 20 years by only placing elected officials on that board. I know there's an argument about it that took place 20-ish years ago, or whatever it was, in which we got individual citizens appointed to that board by the commission and by the county to represent the people. Well, sadly, that is what we call, or at least I learned a long time ago, taxation without representation. It's wrong. It's fundamentally wrong. You can have three non-elected persons and one elected person and pass any budget you want with RCPD. That's serious, and that's significant. And as we've acknowledged before, what is it, $17 million is what the city operates on after it gives $23 million or $22.5 million over to RCPD to run police operations. I'm desperate to get that to be changed. And I've mentioned before, fortunately in the statute, if it doesn't get changed by you all, there'll be an effort to create a petition, to get enough signatures, to make it on the ballot, so that the citizens will decide who gets on that board and not you Commissioners or the county Commissioners. I don't think either one, either of the bodies wants that. I think you need to do the right thing and only appoint elected officials to that. There's only one that's permanent, and as you know, that's the county attorney, according to the statute. He or she will always be there. I won't use up all my time, but I want to point out something that I had an epiphany when I was messing with my cloud-based accounting software. I happened to pull out my 2023 tax statement. Not anxious to get my 2024, but who is? And I was looking at the numbers, and it occurred to me that 80% of the taxes that I pay to the city go to RCPD, and 20% of the taxes that I pay to Riley County go to RCPD. Hmm. What's the numbers behind that? Well, think about this. If you like my house, and I probably have a quarter-million-dollar home, I'm guessing on the west side of town, I don't actually remember the value, but I'm sure it can be looked up, that boils down to, for my wife and I, just the two of us, we get to pay $1,329.85 just for law enforcement. That's $110 a month for law enforcement. I don't know if that's high. I don't know if that's low, but I think that's a pretty significant number, when the total budget, I think, for RCPD is somewhere in the neighborhood of $26 or $27 million and climbing, particularly in the cases, I understand from someone who told me, quite shockingly, I was quite shocked to hear that in the last 12 years, the RCPD force has grown, basically doubled. And what has the city population done, or the county population done? It certainly hasn't doubled. Now, please, I've stated this before, I'm not here to defund the police. That's not my purpose. I think it needs to be right-sized from a budgetary standpoint, just as I think the city has to have a right-sized budget, and the county, and the school district. I've said this before also, that I'm not overly concerned about how you spend my sales tax dollars, although there are others in the room that are. I have a choice. I can shop here. I can shop in Topeka. I can, I guess I could live somewhere else, too, which unfortunately, a lot of people, as you know from the R and R hearing, may be doing that. But the reality is, property taxes, property taxes, property taxes. And I don't think the citizens are interested in continuing to be represented by non-elected officials. It needs to be you all to make up of seven, so I guess that would be six elected officials, perhaps three of you and two of the county, or three of the county and two of you, however that works out. But I would ask on the 21st, please, please, please make sure that's on the agenda. And if at least you have it on the agenda and say, nope, we're not changing it, then I'll have a clear direction of where I'm going, down to see the county clerk to get the petition, because it needs to change. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Gary. Joe, are you planning to speak?
I'm Joe Knopp. I live at 104 Oakwood Circle. I want to follow up on our discussion a couple weeks ago about tax abatements for retail and banks and restaurants. I asked for an open meetings request, or open public information request, and I think I found the answer myself. Resolution number 070103-C is your existing policy on tax abatements. And it says that tax abatements will only be allowed for economic development purposes, and it defines those purposes as engaging in manufacturing articles of commerce which result in additional employment. It goes on to say that that policy, we're not going to abate for businesses that would compete directly with existing businesses, unless the competing businesses have already received or at least been offered similar incentives. Finally, it says that annually, a report will be made of the abatements that are made to the city, and it says that anybody applying for this must pay a $1,000 fee to be considered. So I then looked for that report, and I was hoping it was just a single one-page report that had them all listed in the total. But the 2022 report is available, and it's quite extensive. It lists all the tax abatements that have been made over the years. The 2023 report apparently is, I can't find it on your website. In a month, we're going to have the 2024 report. So you can look at those and see, but nowhere in this report is there any tax abatement for a bank, for a restaurant, or for housing. And for good reason, they don't create more jobs. And for good reason, they're just competing with other banks, restaurants, and housing. A lot of people in town have spent considerable money improving their investment and their time. And I know that there's concern that there's vacant property that needs to be developed. And the problem is that this is a significant public policy question. I drove around Sunday after church just looking at properties I knew, and as I was going from one property to another, I said, well, wait a minute, that's vacant, too. You've got a full block across from K-State on Blue Mont. You've got another lot over by Manhattan Public Lot, or the middle school. You just go around the corner of Teller Creek Boulevard and Kimball. I can point these out. The minute you start opening this up, tax abatements to those individuals, in this case, everybody will be here asking for the same treatment and should get it. And you start giving away our tax base, then the rest of us who are being fair and have played by the rules all these years are just getting doubly punished, not only for the increased cost of service, but we're having to pay for things for people who aren't paying for those. And that's why I think you need to look at this policy very carefully. I'm surprised that it's gotten as far as it has, because the policy appears to say that this is absolutely not a proper place for abating property taxes. But if you're going to go down that road and change this policy, I think you need to be very clear to the public and not say, well, it's just one time, because it's not going to be just one time. It's going to be for a lot of people. And there's been a lot of people who've done development in the community without this, and I'm sure that this Kansas City Bank and Wichita Developer can do it, if they want to, without it as well. It's not a but-for situation for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Is there anyone else who wants to make public comment? Seeing none, we will close public comment and open it up for Commissioner statements. Commissioner Minton?
I just read that Kansas is fourth in number of people who go to libraries, and I think that's really good for us. They say that we have an average of 4.20 visits. I would never know how that 2-0 goes, but I think maybe I bumped the average up. But, you know, when you do check out, you can, they can tell you how much you've saved that year, and so that's kind of a good feeling when you walk out knowing you've saved sometimes hundreds of dollars. Second, our mayor talked about the animal shelter and that we have 4,000 dogs?
14,000.
14,000 dogs. It'd be really great if everybody bought a dog tag. That would probably pay for the costs of the shelter and a lot of other things. So let's make sure we do that because we love our dogs.
I would just like to acknowledge that there's an obituary in the paper tonight for Dick Hader. Mr. Hader was a very engaged citizen in Manhattan. He served on the City Commission in the late 80s and was mayor in 1990, 91. So I'd just like to acknowledge his service to the city and extend our condolences to his family. Okay. We will now move on to the consent agenda. These are items of a routine or housekeeping nature, or items which have been previously reviewed by the City Commission and may be approved in one motion. A commissioner may request that an item be removed for a separate discussion and considered immediately following the consent agenda to the city. Comments from the public related to any item on the consent agenda to the City Commission is permitted. Again, you will be limited to one speaking opportunity. Is there anyone who wishes to address items on the consent agenda? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'd like to remove it. I'd like to talk about E4 and E6.
Do you just want to talk about it, or do you want to remove them?
Well, I, yeah, I just want to talk about it.
So...
I just want clarification about what, how we're changing the ordinance related to Parks and Rec Advisory Board. Aaron, what are we doing? Aaron, what are we doing?
Commissioner, this is part of a longer process that we've been doing for the last two years, where we're going back to each advisory board and updating their bylaws to be consistent with the resolution, policy-maintain resolution that you all adopted as a commission, that kind of just oversees them. What's that?
The previous commission adopted that.
Yes.
So what did we change?
It standardizes the language within the bylaws of the Parks and Rec Advisory Board to be consistent with all other boards, so it goes into details about, you know, officers, so who's the chair and the vice chair, membership, eligibility requirements, how meetings are run, the purpose of the board, remote participation, just, just a lot of the decorum of how boards should be run.
Okay, thank you. And then number six on E, we're rezoning certain parks in public open space, what's that all about?
This is really just a technical change, our parks across the city have various zoning districts, we don't really understand the history of that, but this is to standardize where all the parks, or most of the parks, have our new zoning district of PI-one, Public Institutional One. The one indicates that this would be for any type of open space, recreation facility, or not facility, but recreational outdoor space. There is a PI-two, that would be more municipal type of facilities or schools, typically those that have a higher intensity use. So this really is just making sure that all of our, our parks have a zoning that fits them, rather than having some in ICS, which is industrial, some in high-density residential.
Yeah, I understand that the county was not interested in doing that with CECO.
Correct.
I, you know, I think that those kinds of things are the kind of thing we should, when we have a city-county meeting, we should maybe bring up with them, because I don't think they knew what that was all about before they were approached about that.
And so I think they were hesitant, so you know, I, we've kind of have good partnerships with the county, and sort of dropping things on them doesn't make them very happy.
Our assistant director did go to the county commission meeting a couple of weeks ago and did present this and explain to him, or explain to the commission what this entails, and really that it was just a technical change. There, my understanding is their hesitation at the time is they weren't really sure what their plans were for CECO, and they wanted to retain maximum flexibility and not make any decisions until they knew what their plan was.
Commissioner Opel, did you wish to, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I wanted to vote separately on basically all of F, F-one, two, and three, just so we can have a discussion and, and vote on that separately.
Okay, so Commissioner Opel would like to remove resolutions F-one, two, and three from the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
Oh, sorry.
Public comment.
Is there a public comment for any item on the agenda?
Good evening, I'm Mel Borst, nineteen eighteen Humboldt Street. I just wanted to follow up on Joe Knopp's remarks on the industrial revenue bonds and how they're issued, and that you have two on your consent agenda to consider.
Which are, are going to be removed from the, they're being removed from the consent agenda, so do you want to hold your comments until we have that discussion?
I think that would be fine. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mel. Do we have a motion to approve the remainder of the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
Commissioner McCullough made a motion to approve the consent agenda, and Commissioner Minton seconded. Clerk, can you please read the minute, read, read the roster?
Commissioner McCullough?
Yes.
Commissioner Opel?
Yes.
Commissioner Mata? Commissioner Minton?
Yes.
Mayor Adamcheck?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. All right, shall we discuss the items removed from the agenda?
Sure. So do we have to go through these one by one, or can we, I mean, because they, I think they all kind of go together, do they have to be voted on individually? Because, since they were removed?
No, they have to be voted on individually, yes.
Okay, great. So the first one is resolution supporting KHITC, Kansas Housing Investor Tax Credit and Moderate Income Housing. I just had a couple of questions that I wanted to kind of make clear. Can we talk about kind of the process of how this came about and, and how we came to, to get this application?
Sure. Both MIH and, I call it Kitec, just because that's a mouthful of acronyms to say, both of those programs have been around for several years now with the state. We actually, probably in twenty-twenty-three, there was a Kitec project that came forward, developer had reached out, they said, we're interested in this funding, we brought a resolution, just like we did tonight, to the commission, and unfortunately, that one wasn't funded. So my understanding is Kansas Housing Resource Corporation, KHRC, that manages these programs, they have rounds three or four times a year for these different funding sources, they send out to their email blast, these are, our, our application, our RFP is open, is anyone interested? We, this is the first time we've received an MIH application or interest, a formal letter requesting interest in that program. For Kitec, as I mentioned, it's the second time, so the, the city is really bound to the state's timeline here, and it was rather quick. I, KHRC sent out the RFP October first, I received a letter October eighth from this interested applicant, and the applications are due November twenty-second. So this was the first meeting before those applications were due. There's, the turnaround will continue to be about this quick every time, which really gives us very little opportunity to, to do much other than react to any sort of application that we receive or any sort of letter of intent.
And so what kind of evaluation do you do when somebody brings you an application?
That's what we're, that's what we have before you this evening. We only received one, it's highly competitive, I've heard a couple of different numbers, but maybe one out of every four gets funded. There are certain criteria that the state looks for, and if the, if the commission, if we do ever get to a point that we have multiple applications, we can certainly entertain how you would like staff to either prioritize those for you or to evaluate those, but I, the state's been encouraging Manhattan to apply now for a couple of years, and it's exciting that we have a project that we can actually submit.
Stephanie, I have several questions as well. I understand that this application is being submitted for round four?
Yes.
And the deadline for the application itself is in a week or two?
Twenty-second.
But the deadline for notice of application was last week?
Yes.
Did the city submit that notice?
The city did not, the developer did, they did let me know that that was out there. Again, because we didn't have a commission meeting between when we received that, that interest letter and now, we submitted that, that does not obligate us to apply for a formal application. So if the commission wishes not to move forward with this, we would just notify the state that that notice of intent, that they can go ahead and disregard that.
I'm also a little bit concerned because part of the application includes a property which we will be voting on later, whether to re, rezone.
Yes.
And so I think at best we should defer voting on this, voting on this particular application until after that discussion has been held.
That's certainly commission's prerogative.
So commissioners, I'd suggest that we defer, Jamie, do you want to say something?
I, I mean, I guess it's, I'm curious as to, if it's up here, I don't know, does zoning matter in that, because it's part of a, the MIH is part of a larger project?
But would the packaging, if we do not vote this evening to rezone one part of that package, will the developer still submit the package?
I, I would really like to defer to Tyler Holloman to speak to that, I do think he has plans if that rezoning does not go through, what he would like to do.
Commission, your policy states that you would address an item removed from the agenda right now unless you want, as a majority, to move it later, so I would recommend if you want to discuss this item and vote after rezoning, that you make a motion and have a vote to move it later, and then you can have the conversation to include a conversation about rezoning at that time, instead of discussing the outcome of a rezoning before you've decided the rezoning, so.
Is, is there a motion to defer this discussion until later in the agenda, after the discussion on rezoning?
I don't know, this is, seems like half a dozen one way, six another.
You, you don't want to be in a position, Commissioner, of learning about the outcome, how the outcome of the rezoning affects this before you all, as a commission, have made a decision on the rezoning. So this would help protect that part of the process that you're considering the rezoning within the scope of that item, and then you could still have this discussion after that. I mean, I'm not, you, you would just be deferring it so that you've made your re-zoning decision first.
Okay.
Well, I mean, for me, I guess it's not, yeah, the zoning doesn't matter on this one, because it's, the question is, are we comfortable with us submitting in this round, and this is the only application that's been received, so the question is, do we want to let this round go on without submitting, or do we want to submit? And then I would say it's on the developer then, to then make the decision on how they're submitting that application and finalizing it.
That's a good way.
So I would be comfortable continuing to vote, because...
I think what Katie's point was, and please correct me if I'm wrong, was that the zoning, because it's more of a quasi-judicial decision, if we make this, if we vote to approve this support of this project, before we approve the zoning, it could have an air of bias? Is that...
There's a risk of that, Commissioner, but also since, I, I was prompted to say that after the developer was invited to speak to the impact the outcome of the rezoning might have on this application, that's the conversation that we don't want to have before the rezoning.
If we just get back to the intent of the item, those five sections are what you're being asked to consider, it's a resolution of support. You pass it, you move on to your other conversations, you don't pass something in the future, this really doesn't mean anything. They're not going to pursue it. So that's why it was structured this way, it's a resolution of support for the application to move forward, it doesn't have anything to do with your future items. It's why it was on consent, and it was why it was before you even get to your general agenda.
I, I think it wasn't clear to us as a commission, your, your point, it was puzzling to several of us that this was on the consent agenda.
Yeah, and that's understandable, these resolutions of support are really what the state looks back to the city to do for these applications to proceed. There are other factors that the developer is pursuing later in the meeting that also apply.
All right, so is there a motion to support, to pass this resolution of support to support a Kansas Housing Investor Tax Credit and Moderate Income Housing Grant application?
Yes, I will move that we approve Resolution one-one-zero-five-two-four-TAC-A, supporting a Kansas Housing Investor Tax Credit and Moderate Income Housing Grant Project, and authorize mayor and city administration to execute an application for MIH grant funds through Kansas Housing Resources Corporation.
Second.
Commissioner Opel has made the motion, and Commissioner Minton has seconded, can we please have the roll?
Do you want to make public comment?
I'm sorry. Is there anyone who would like to make a public comment on this resolution? Seeing none, we will, seeing none, we will ask for the roll to be called.
Commissioner Opel?
Yes.
Commissioner Mata?
Yes.
Commissioner Minton?
Yes.
Commissioner Adamcheck, or Mayor Adamcheck?
Yes.
Commissioner McCullough?
No.
Motion carries four to one.
All right, we have two other items that were withdrawn from the consent agenda.
Yeah, so both of these are essentially the same, same applicant, just two different locations. I just wanted to kind of clarify, again, the process of, of getting these, so can you just talk about that a little bit?
Sure, this process is outlined in, I don't, this isn't, this process is outlined in the policy manual resolution that the commission passed back in August. For sales tax exemptions, or IRB sales tax exemptions, the process is, the applicant fills out a preliminary application, they pay a fee, staff will review that to make sure it meets the eligibility as described in the policy manual, and then we will work with bond counsel to draft the resolution that you have before you. Part of the conversations that we had with the commissioners when we were drafting these policies is that the sales tax exemption would be rather routine, your policy states that you are willing to, that the policy adopted supports rental housing projects across the entire city and any kind of housing spectrum, you do always retain the discretion of whether you want to approve that or not, so we were at the last step in the process, which is bringing that resolution before you for, for approval.
Cool, thanks, yeah, I just wanted to make sure that it was clear to everybody, like, this is part of what we've been talking about all year, that was one of the, the policy resolutions. These are in areas that have been designated to be candidates for that, correct?
The sales tax exemption applies citywide, however, you are correct in that both of these properties would be within that, of the redevelopment zone that we've identified that does apply for the property tax abatement, but it is an area that we identified, this is where we really want to encourage and incentivize redevelopment opportunities.
Great. Okay, then, oh, sorry.
Thank you. Is there anyone who would like to make public comment on this project?
Mel Borst again, nineteen eighteen Humboldt Street. I just have a concern about further encouraging infill development in our historic older neighborhoods that are already threatened with oversized structures against the land use plan, the goals of preserving and stabilizing our neighborhoods. So this, this is a, I see what's happening along the streets that these projects are happening, and it's, it's very concerning, you know, when you see the scale of these things looming over the neighborhoods. And so I, I, I'm sorry I missed the earlier discussions on this, I think there's, it might be a tool to use if, if, if we had a scale that was appropriate for our older neighborhoods, but that's not the case right now, and I'll be talking more about that later. Thank you. One other comment is, perhaps some of this funding could be considered to be available to first-time homebuyers to help them get into existing housing stock. Thank you.
Thank you. In the interest of full disclosure, I have driven by both of these properties, and construction is fairly advanced on both of them, so I'm not sure that they would hold up to the but-for rule that Mr. Knopp has talked to us about.
Brief comment, the, Joe Knopp, 104 Oakwood Circle. Every one of these abatements has an impact on us, and I wasn't aware that you had already made such a liberal... And I wasn't aware that you had already made such a liberal policy, apparently, for sales tax exemptions. And it's easy for us to say, well, it's only a 2% for the city and the rest of it's the state. I'd just remind us all that we have probably a higher per capita dependence upon state funds, as Kansas State being here, than anybody. But if the state lets us get away with it, then I guess we ought to take advantage of it. That goes, that's one philosophy of government. But, you know, those who can afford to go through this process of bonding and getting the exemption have a clear advantage. And we're tipping the scales in favor of those who do want to play that game. And it's one thing to say, I'm going to get cheaper financing through the IRB bond issue. It's another thing to take city revenue out of our pockets and subsidize these folks. You know, I don't know whether Royal Towers got a subsidy for the great job I think they're doing up there. I don't know whether the other people, I don't think Mike Chin got a subsidy for doing the things he did in Aggieville. I don't know a lot of people. I keep coming back. And the sales tax, while it's not as critical as the property tax, it still chips away at our base. And next August, when we come back here and we're arguing about how we can hold the line on the budget, this is one way. And it is always, in closing, I would say it's always ironic to me that we have a very tight budget in August and September, or September or July and August. And then suddenly in September and October, applications for funding and applications for money come in and suddenly there's room and there's suddenly there's findings for it. I'm hopeful that the budget is the maximum and you will look through as each expenditure comes through and say, is this really important and is this necessary for our future? And conclude that a fair level playing field with no one having advantage is the ideal position to be in for a city. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Any other comments?
Sorry, I always forget to sign in here. Josh Brewer, Habitat for Humanity, I live at 410 Fremont Street. Just want to contextualize again with the use of these subsidies, that these are tools, they do represent a real public burden. And the question is, for us, is not so much whether to use the tool or not use the tool, but to ask ourselves, in which cases are we using the tool? What are we looking for? What are the neighborhoods themselves indicating that they're looking for? And I also drove by these properties and did see the construction had commenced and do wonder, would these projects have started if they didn't clearly demonstrate profitability? So is this necessary to move forward? That said, as our housing study has indicated, we do need housing stock in all categories. And so I would just say that the tools that we have at our disposal should be used, including Mih and IRBs, but under conditions that align with our community's strategy. Thank you.
Thank you, Josh. Any further comments from the public?
My name is Zach Burton.
Zach, hold on, can you please reset the clock? Thank you.
My name's Zach Burton. My wife, Michelle, and I are the ones who are bringing these items forward. And I just wanted to make myself available to answer any questions, first of all, that you guys might have about these properties in specific. And then, second of all, just offer some insight into not only the program that we're utilizing, but also just the general housing in Manhattan.
Did you already start construction on them?
Yes, we did. So we applied when the application opened up on October the first. And as you know, this has been an ongoing application process for quite some time in developing these programs. A housing study was done three years ago. There's been multiple meetings, both in work sessions and also in in planning board meetings, in commission meetings, in terms of work sessions that have gone into these projects. And so, yes, we have started these. We have to, in terms of the market, the way that it works, be able to have ample time to be able to rent these out when the rental season would hit. And so, and knowing that we applied for them before we started, that's kind of where we came down on that.
John, do you have any questions for Zach?
No.
So in terms of a level playing field, anybody in the city of Manhattan can apply for these. So these aren't being given out to specific developers. They're not being funneled to one person or another person. As stated on the city website, it's an open application process. The policies that you put forth were policies that were debated for quite some time, both by you guys as commissioners, by people in the planning board, and also by members of the community. The things that went into this really came down to a few different items that were important. One of them was utilizing existing city infrastructure. So how do we be cognizant of taxpayer dollars in doing that? These projects both utilize existing city infrastructure. Both projects were houses that were dilapidated. The one at 1011 Laramie had been vacant for six years. It had raccoons living in there. It was a disaster. 827 Moro had been vacant for about eight months prior to us buying it. Both of those we tore down and are providing an increment to the city in terms of the taxpayer dollar that would equate to $1.1 million per property, while each one prior to us taking over were in the $120,000 to $160,000 range. So the taxpayer base is definitely going to go up with these additions. The other thing that I'd really like to point out is these incentives aren't going to our bottom line. So we have an opportunity to rent these out, I would say, for around $1,300 a month each unit that we're building. We're capping that at $1,060 per month to also integrate into the workforce housing mechanism. That's also something that you guys have passed along with this housing policy. Those applications don't open up until April. You can correct me if I'm wrong on that. So we've been talking about these programs for quite some time. Excuse me, Commissioner McCullough, you made a comment about a year ago. You said that actually in 2000 is when we had the first housing study done. And what have we really done with it in terms of action items? And so that's what we're really wanting to do, is we're wanting to meet a need in the community where there is, low income housing has a ton of programs for it. I'm all for that. I don't think any of you guys have ever heard me stand up here and criticize another development project in town. You've also never gotten a letter from me that criticizes anything. We have a real housing need in town. Our costs of construction have gone up dramatically. As we sit here today, lumber prices are about as high as they've ever been in history. Our labor costs are high. We tried to redevelop a project at Burger King in Aggieville. We were in discussions with the city about even them just giving us parking. Would it work if they just gave us parking in the garage downtown to support that project? It still doesn't work financially. There's been one apartment project that's been built in town in the last five years, and it just doesn't work anymore. I mean, I've been doing this for 24 years here in town. And I can tell you unequivocally that it doesn't work anymore to build market rate housing. We have two bedroom properties that we have out at Colbert Hills, and many of you have met us out there, my wife and I, to look at those. Those are now renting for $2,030 a month for a two bedroom property, and it barely breaks even. So as we look at what rental rates are, the fact of the matter is is that rental rates just haven't gone up with what the cost of labor and construction has gone up. And that's due to a variety of factors here in town. We can talk about those at another date. But I appreciate your consideration of this. We feel like it's something that's really important for the city. Thank you.
Are there any additional public comments? Seeing no one approach the podium, we will close public comments. Commissioners?
Yeah, I just had a comment with that. You know, I think as we've rolled out these policies, we did it with the intent of also like learning and adjusting as we went. We kind of knew it may not be perfect from the beginning. And I do think if it's a criteria going forward that we want to know that a project doesn't start until after we have the discussion. I mean, I just, I think we should, if that is a point of whether or not we will approve or not, based on that, we should include that in the application process or what amount of completion a project could be or whether we're requiring it to, like, these projects, you know, we don't give anything to something that's already started if that's where we're at. You know, I do believe that we pass these with the intent to encourage housing. I know this didn't open until October. So from where it stands, I am in favor of approving those and moving those forward. Just think for future discussions or future applications, we, if that's something we care about, we should see if we can group that into future applications.
Yeah, you know, Susan, when you brought up that they were under construction, that really made me pause and think. But then I thought again about the process that we've been through this year, and that wasn't one of our criteria. You know, we did have criteria that we set in our policy. And we did assume that we were going to make some changes. So I think, I agree with Jamie. You know, if we want to include that in our criteria, we certainly can, should discuss that and can change that. But we do have this opportunity here. And to Mel's point about the getting homeowner assistance, that I do think that that would be useful. However, we have to have the stock in order to be able to support something like that first. And very clearly, we have that problem to tackle. So, yeah, I'm with Jamie.
All right, do we have a motion to approve Resolution Number 110524B determining the city's intent to issue IRBs and authorizing a sales tax exemption?
I move we approve what Susan said.
Second.
Commissioner Minton has moved to approve Resolution Number 110524B determining the city's intent to issue industrial revenue bonds and authorizing a sales tax exemption for Zachary Burton and Michelle Burton at a 1011 Laramie Townhomes project. Clerk, will you please, and Commissioner Opel has seconded. Will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Mata? Commissioner Minton?
Yes.
Mayor Adamcheck?
No.
Commissioner McCullough?
No.
Commissioner Opel?
Yes.
Motion carries three to two.
Do we have a motion to approve the second Resolution Number 110524C determining the city's intent to issue IRBs and authorizing a sales tax exemption for Zachary Burton and Michelle Burton's property at 827 Moro Townhomes?
I move that we approve Resolution Number 110524-C determining the city's intent to issue industrial revenue bonds and authorizing a sales tax exemption for Zachary Burton and Michelle Burton's 827 Moro Townhomes project.
I'll second. Will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Minton?
Yes.
Mayor Adamcheck?
No.
Commissioner McCullough?
No.
Commissioner Opel?
Yes.
Commissioner Mata?
Yes.
Motion carries three to two.
Thank you. We will now move on to considering rezoning 300 North 11th Street and 1020 Leavenworth Street.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I was asked to give a very brief introduction to this item tonight because this commission hasn't had this introduction as a group before. Tonight, as the mayor mentioned, we're considering a rezoning, which is a quasi judicial decision. The main principles of a quasi judicial decision are listed here. Tonight, this is a broader presentation, but tonight I'm going to speak in the context of a rezoning. Tonight, you'll hear a public presentation of specific facts presented by our city staff. You will accept comments. You can accept comments from the applicants and then also open public comment. Your decision tonight requires you to apply the information that you received, the evidence that you've received, to specific factors related to rezoning. Those factors are listed in your AIS or your memo. That's part of the city commission's public packet. And then Stephanie will also review those as part of her presentation. And then your decision, which is a hallmark of a quasi judicial decision, that it's the decision you issue, you'll state the basis for that decision. And it has limited applicability, meaning it only applies to the subject property. A few things to keep in mind as we start the rezoning is that you are required to have due process. We should make this fair, open, and impartial. If you have a conflict of interest, you would recuse yourself. If you have, and I'm going to talk a little bit more about this in a minute, but you would want to make sure that you're basing your decision on the evidence that you have before you tonight and making sure that you are coming into tonight's item with an open mind and that you haven't prejudged it. We always provide some tips about being in the quasi judicial posture, and I'll talk about those specifically to rezoning. I say the overarching issue is just asking yourself how you would want to be judged if you were in this position or how you'd want your issue to be judged and treating other people with that same level of objectivity and fairness and openness. I reviewed some of these things, but in the context of a rezoning, it is fairly routine or typical for the commission to be contacted by members of the public before rezoning. If you've received emails on the matter, I have an example here. When you're, tonight, you can make a statement, you disclose that to the record. There's an example that you've received emails from neighbors concerned about whatever. You can summarize those things so that everyone present knows that information that you have reviewed. You might not have read those emails. If you haven't read those emails, then you don't have anything to disclose. The other thing that's really common with rezonings is if you've driven by the property. And that's okay, you can suggest, you can state that as well. So any information that you have gathered prior to tonight, you would disclose that on the record. And I also recommend that you state that you are approaching tonight with objectivity, with an open mind tonight, that you haven't prejudged it so that we, the members of the audience, know that you are providing that due process and impartiality. That's all I have. If there's any questions for me, I can answer those. Other than that, Stephanie will go through the rezoning and she'll hit on the specific factors for you to consider and your decisions tonight.
Katie, what was the planning board's action on this?
Stephanie's going to cover that as part of her presentation.
But I understand it was, they did not support this.
She's, yes, she's.
Don't we have some sort of a majority that we have to have to over?
At the end of Stephanie's presentation, we have listed the statutory options that you're referring to, Commissioner, and we'll go, Stephanie can go through each of those. So we will cover those. Thank you for asking.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Questions, I just wanted to call out, I know I sent a copy of the email to Jason and Danielle, got it. I did get an email from someone on the planning board, you know, kind of stating why they voted no and didn't think there was enough time for this new zoning to take effect. And by doing this kind of changes, it would, you know, kind of kill that potential. I can still be open minded and not prejudge it, but I just wanted to call that out. And like you said, obviously, we've been inundated with more emails and everything else from neighbors and interested parties.
Do we do that now?
Katie, could, I think you need to maybe, I don't know if the people at home could understand that. I mean, it was.
Oh, Commissioner Mata's statement?
Yeah, just kind of read.
Sure. Commissioner Mata stated a minute ago that he did receive an email from a member of the planning board regarding why the member of the planning board, why they voted no on this. He's also stated that he's received emails from members of the public as other commissioners have, just that were sent to all commissioners, mostly from neighbors who had concerns about the rezoning.
Thank you.
Yes, yes, thank you. Yes, Commissioner Mata, it's a, we're having a little trouble hearing you in here, so we were stating it just in case anyone missed it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Katie, I did have one question because we'll still do public comment on this item. And so how does that, is that any different than we normally do it because of how we have to evaluate this?
That's a good question, Commissioner. The public comment is subject. The public comment is subject to the same rules of decorum as the other, any other comments with the five minutes. So there's really not much different from the public comment perspective. One thing that is different is that the applicant has a longer opportunity to speak because they are the applicant for it. And then at the end of public comment, once it's closed, the commission can ask additional questions, or the applicant can respond to public comment because they have that interest in this, in this project.
Thank you.
Is, when are we supposed to talk about, like, anything, like, the emails and stuff? Do we do that now or after?
Yes, you can go ahead and disclose them, and then Stephanie can come on up and go through.
So, yeah, I, I think we've all got a lot of those emails. I did watch the planning board meeting, just to have all of that information firsthand. And I have, I met with the applicant regarding the MIH grant application. We very specifically did not discuss zoning. So we talked about the MIH grant and their application process, but we did not discuss the, the properties in question this evening.
I'm in the same situation as Peter. I've also driven by the property, not necessarily on purpose, it's just a route. I was just driving where I go.
Yeah, I had emails, too.
As did I, and I have hunched past the property. I actually know people who live in one of those buildings, so I've been, I've visited the property.
Good evening. Stephanie Peterson, Director of Community Development. As you know, the item before you this evening is a rezoning of 300 North 11th and 1020 Leavenworth. The request is to go from RL, our single-family detached district with an established neighborhood overlay, to RLA, which is a single-family attached district, and the applicant has requested that they retain that established neighborhood overlay. Here's a general location of the property, immediately east of City Park, at the northeast corner of Leavenworth and 11th Street. Here is our existing zoning map. You can see that the property is currently zoned RL with that established neighborhood overlay. A half-block to the north, that, that block is zoned RH. And then immediately to the west is City Park. It is currently zoned RH. You passed an ordinance, the first reading of an ordinance earlier today that would rezone that to PI-1, but it still would retain its RH district until after that second reading. Our future land use map, this is adopted within our comprehensive plan. This really speaks to the future growth of certain areas of our community and the intended land uses. The property here is outlined in red, and the future land use map shows this as RLM, low-to-medium-density residential. So low-to-medium-density residential allows for up to 11 dwelling units per acre. So the requested RLA zoning district would fit within that future land use designation. We've started providing the permitted uses within the requested zoning district just for your information. We don't conditionally zone a project, so even if a developer or applicant were to come up here and tell you what, what they were proposing to do with their property, that doesn't mean that any of these other uses couldn't also take place. What I'll note is that in RLA, it's very similar. It actually is almost duplicative of the RL zoning district. However, I highlighted here, too, with an asterisk, that are unique to RLA. They do allow for a two-unit townhome or a three-to-five-unit townhome. I will note that because the established neighborhood overlay is being retained, it would be limited to three townhomes. And I'll talk a little bit more about what that established neighborhood overlay district does and how it pertains to, to this property.
Stephanie, quick question.
Sure.
Three townhomes, is that three units, three total units?
Correct.
Okay. And that's per property?
Per lot.
Per lot, okay.
Yes.
What's the small component of that, I mean, small townhouse?
Oh, because we allow up to, like, I mean, you could do a 16-unit townhome if you really wanted to. So we just consider small anywhere from three to five units. You were provided, Barry Beagle, our senior planner, he, he did a staff report for the planning board, and I, he evaluated the seven rezoning criteria that we use to determine whether staff can support a rezoning. These are also the same criteria that both the planning board and the city commission should use, and we'll talk a little bit more about how you can use these factors to support your decision. So just going through Barry's staff report, I highlighted a couple of things here that I wanted to point out under each of these criteria. So the first one is the existing use of the property, including its characteristics, zoning history, and the suitability for the currently allowed uses. And Barry's analysis, he identifies that both properties in question, they each are single-family homes, but they've been split up into three different apartment units. So both of those properties are multifamily currently. The zoning history of this property, as he has outlined, from 1925 to 1940, our zoning district allowed for up to two units. From 1940 to 2015, so for 75 years, multifamily units were allowed, which is how we have two properties that have three apartment units in them. And then in 2015, there was a downzoning, and the RL zoning district that is there today in 2015 is when it was downgraded to that. The other item that I would note is that, given the zoning history of this area, we do see a lot of existence of higher-density type of units. There are not a lot of single, actually, single-family as a minority structure type within this neighborhood. And Barry states in his staff report that the site is not suitable to be restricted to single-family residential use because of the presence of the multifamily buildings or the multifamily uses in this area.
Stephanie, that-
Yes, ma'am.
-that did not make sense to me when I read it in the report. Why could it not revert to a single-family home?
It definitely could. I think in our, we've done some kind of analysis off to the side as well of some of our RL subdivision, or RL neighborhoods. In the, in the 10 years that it has been zoned RL, there have been very few homes that have been taken from, that have been split up like this and then converted back to single-family. And so it's looking at, and I'll kind of get to this, 58% of the current, let me just jump for, jump here. So Barry's analysis included this six-block area right here. I don't know if I can draw. Nope. So this six blocks right here, 58% of the units are more than, are two or more units. They do not retain that, that traditional single-family use. From a zoning perspective, that makes them a non-conforming use. So if the property was substantially damaged, a fire, tornado, some sort of natural disaster like that, they would not be able to rebuild with what they have there today. And so we've, we've seen a decline in the property values from several of these homes. There's really not a, an impetus to put a lot of money into something that if it was destroyed, you wouldn't be able to rebuild and recoup that investment. So that, Mayor, is why I believe that Barry made that finding.
Are we kind of saying that this zoning is wrong now?
It's just saying that the current use is inconsistent with the underlying zoning, which is why I believe that the applicant is seeking to rezone the property. The RLA designation would actually bring those two structures into, as a permitted use, into conformity with, with zoning.
The larger area would stay the same?
Currently, yes. Okay, so number two, consistency with the comprehensive plan. I did provide you what our future land use map shows, and that the future land use map does identify this area as low-to-medium-density residential. For number three, adequacy of services, we are looking at infills, we won't really touch on that one. For the character of the neighborhood, including the zoning and uses of nearby property, again, in Barry's staff report, he did an analysis of that six-block area. 58% of the unit, of the lots have two or more units, and 3/4 of all the properties in this two-block area east of City Park are rentals. So for over half of this area functions as RLA, not as the RL designation that it currently has. For number five, compatibility of the proposed zoning district with nearby property, I could just restate every, all the statistics I just gave you. Most of those nearby properties, over half, are currently multifamily or would be more compatible with the RLA zoning district. I did want to speak to the, the overlay, the established neighborhood overlay that the applicant has asked to be retained on this property. That overlay is to preserve the, the neighborhood character, that, that established neighborhood character that we see in this area. The setbacks are determined a little bit differently here. We look at all of the properties along a block phrase, and then we kind of take the average of that setback. It's not just a straight 20-foot or 25-feet. There are certain architectural features that any new building must have, or if there's a substantial change to the existing property, it has to conform with that. There's a building design suggestions in there, the roof pitch has to be a certain way, again, to make sure that any new or substantial changes that are made in this area, that they conform to that kind of older neighborhood integrity. For number six, the proposed change addresses a community need identified in the adopted plan. Barry cited the housing market analysis, which the commission adopted in 2022. The HM, so the HMA, or Housing Market Analysis, it speaks to missing middle housing, that's kind of a catchword right now across the nation as we talk about housing, but missing middle is really looking at that kind of two-to-five-unit type of structure, and the RLA is a, is a great zoning district to be able to allow that kind of subtle density in certain locations. We also speak about improving the condition of our existing housing stock. Again, we've seen a decline in the property values of, of these two particular parcels. Some of that can be attributed to the, the condition that they are currently in. And we also speak in our housing market analysis that over the next 20 years, we need 3,000 housing units, and that's new housing units. That doesn't take into consideration properties like this that are non-conforming, that offer more than just one housing unit per lot. And so our, our housing market analysis addresses the fact that we need to find a way to keep some of our existing housing units. So in this particular case, we have six housing units total between these two lots. If those properties were to, say, have, be destroyed by more than 50%, they could only be rebuilt with one on each lot. That would just add to the need to, to create more housing units.
Can I just clarify on that?
Absolutely.
It's, the, the value, or the, the value of improvement has to be under 50%, right? So if there were-
Correct.
-some type of code that they had to, that they had to conform to, or something like that, that was going to be over 50%, they would not be eligible to do that-
Correct.
...to meet safety code because they are, well-
I would, I would need to check on that one. I'm, I'm not sure if-
Okay.
-life safety improvements are prohibited, but you are, you are correct. If there is an improvement that needs to be made over 50%, they are, wouldn't be allowed to do that because it's a non-conforming use.
Okay.
And I can look on that when I get back to my computer. I just don't have that section.
So Stephanie, we could have then six townhouses on those two lots?
Three each? You could have three units total, which is what there, is there today, correct.
Three and three, there's two, two, two lots?
Yeah, I would need to make sure, I think both lots would have proper width and, and square footage to be able to accommodate that. The maximum that any, any lot could have regardless of size in this district, or in this proposed district, would be three.
And how many units are on each lot currently?
Three.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Let's see. I, so this did go to the planning board October 24th, I believe, and the planning board ended up denying the request three to two to one. There was one abstention. The planning board is supposed to support their denial with a, with a specific finding, and what we could garner from the conversation is that it would be number two, inconsistency with our comprehensive plan.
Can you clarify that, please?
I believe, I, I'm hesitant to somewhat paraphrase their conversation, but it was based on the downzoning that happened in 2015 is kind of my recollection of their conversation.
Were there any specific of these seven eligibility criteria that they specifically noted when they were voting?
They did not. That's a failure on our part. We should have pressed them to, to state this. This was based on their comments that they had made. This was the factor that their comments would fall into the best.
So we pretty much just had to interpret comments and-
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So your options for proceeding this evening, you are able to adopt the planning board's recommendation and deny the rezoning request by a simple majority vote. Your other option is to override the planning board's recommendation and approve the rezoning based on the findings in the staff report. This would take a 2/3 majority vote of the commission. And then the third option is that you could return this to the planning board for reconsideration by a simple majority vote. You would have to provide a statement specifying why you're returning this to the, the planning board and what you would like for them to have further conversation or deliberation on. I would note that after the planning board makes their, their recommendation, again, regardless of what that, that decision is, it comes back to the commission, and at that point, it would take a simple majority for, for the commission to approve the rezoning request. Again, if you deviate from the planning board's findings or from the staff report, we would ask that you identify which of these seven factors that you are making your decision based on. I will stop there if there are any questions. If it's procedural, I might look to Katie to kind of help out with that.
Another question, just from your presentation, the criteria, like you have this staff report evaluation, it would strike me then that other properties that are similarly having non-conforming uses with, say, three units on them or whatever, say, if we were to approve this, then they would, they could look at this and say, well, we're just kind of like them, we can come in and get our zoning changed, too. What's your reaction to that?
Yeah, we would, we would evaluate each case as they come forward. We've had, I can't make a blanket statement there because we have to go through the factors that you see on the screen. One of the, one of the reasons that we were able to support this is that it immediately flanks the park. And so what we see is that we have transitional uses a lot of times in zoning, where you tend to have a higher-density use either along a busy corridor, abutting some sort of commercial property, or even having a transition back into a neighborhood. So you could have a higher-density, say, along 11th Street, and then slowly transition that back into a single-family type of neighborhood. So I, again, I know it's not the answer you want, but we would really have to evaluate each of those cases as it comes forward.
No, I appreciate that answer. It, I know, just is kind of striking me that, you know, we got this set to lower density and, you know, they, it was done for a reason, but it's kind of like, we're saying, but no one's really, you know, built anything to go with that lower density, and it's almost like we're kind of deciding to go ahead and let it change back. I know this is just one case, but it's, I don't know, it just, it's, in some ways, it's almost like we're changing the lower density in, in a way. Again, just thinking through it.
Commissioners, are there other questions for Stephanie? Are there comments from the public regarding this?
Did you want the applicant to-
Sure.
Okay. Do they get timed for this, the applicant?
No.
Okay.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Gavin Schmidt. Thank you for your time. I'm here before you tonight to discuss the rezone of 300 North 11th as well as 1020 Leavenworth. I think Stephanie and staff did a wonderful job explaining why they support this rezone. I'm going to reiterate some of those key points and help clarify where maybe a portion of the planning board may have missed the mark, at least in my opinion. As Stephanie spoke, the development code outlines the seven criteria that this needs to be based on. I'm just going to go through those again. The first is the existing use. The properties have historically been zoned for single-family and multifamily dwellings. That zoning was- That zoning was in effect for 75 years. Very much that this zoning can support RLA zoning. The request isn't for a seismic change. I think that's an important factor here. RL is single family zoning. That's where we're at now. What we're requesting is RLA. That's also single-family zoning. It's, these are single-family homes that we're referring to. There's no stacked living that can happen here. No apartments are allowed here in RLA. It's just single-family homes. Speaking to the sustainability, these properties are all nonconforming like we discussed. This disincentivizes ownership from maintaining and improving these properties. As we talked about with the 50%, if there's a, if there's a damage, if there's wind damage or if there's water damage or things like that of 50%, they can't rebuild these units. So what ends up happening is they put in the bare minimum, owners put in bare minimum investment to maintain their rents, to to accept those rents. They don't want to really improve these properties if they're in nonconforming status. They're at risk of potentially having these properties go away some point in the future. I think that's a really important factor. Stephanie had mentioned that over the last seven years, property tax values continue to decline in these properties because the shape of these properties continues to decline and deteriorate right along our city park. I think that's very important. Number two is the consistency with the comprehensive plan. According to our 2035 Manhattan Urban Area Comprehensive Plan, these properties lie within the residential low to medium density area. This designation encourages a mix of single-family duplex and small multifamily dwellings. Supported, the proposed rezone to RLA is a compatible fit for this rezone. Number three is the adequacy of services and infrastructure. This is why infill sites are so important to our community. All of the infrastructure is already there. We don't have to go out to build all these new units, way out and add sewer, add fire, add stop signs, add everything. It's all right there. As far as the character of the neighborhood, this is already, this neighborhood already has a blend of housing densities. This map is a good example. It shows you all of the parcels. Almost 60% of the homes in these three-block radius right next to City Park is multifamily. I think that's a powerful statement that this fits within, the RLA density fits within the neighborhood of this department, of this neighborhood. Further effort to maintain and encourage character is we are keeping that established neighborhood overlay. That really binds us to adhere to what this neighborhood character is. Everything has to fall within exactly what we would do if we would decide to do something different here. I think that's important that we're going to keep that established neighborhood overlay. We want to be good stewards to this neighborhood. We think it's a great neighborhood. Number five is the compatibility of zoning. Again, I think a picture speaks a thousand words. The RLA designation designation permitting both attached and detached single-family homes aligns well with the neighborhood's existing mix of single-family and multifamily residences. This moderate density increase supports neighborhood continuity while meeting the area's historical and current character. Addressing community needs, there's been so many housing studies we've talked about. Zach mentioned it. We talk about it all the time. The city needs affordable workforce housing in Manhattan. Rezoning to RLA helps address these by enabling modestly increased density while supporting affordable, accessible, walkable housing options. This is what a lot of folks in this community want. And again, I'm going to reiterate on the additional matters is just this isn't a dramatic zoning shift. We're not putting up a skyscraper or anything like that nature. This is a thoughtful request to allow single-family owner-occupied units to be built on this site. We're not trying to change the fabric of this neighborhood. I mean, city staff supported this. I hope you appreciated that piece of it. I do want to take just a couple more minutes and address concerns that I anticipate may be coming up after me because I think it's important. The first is you may hear that these homes, this home in particular, and this neighborhood are historic designation and need to be preserved. And I agree that this home is old. While historic properties do add value to neighborhoods, they can also reach a point where they're beyond their useful life, specifically when neglected for a long period of time. This neighborhood, under its nonconforming use, has experienced minimal maintenance. The city can't simply wait for a buyer, a buyer to save this property, and I'm going to make another note to that in a little bit later. Again, I mentioned that the ownership is disincentivized to rehabilitate this property due to its nonconforming status. Another concern may be that we're adding more density here if this is a single-family neighborhood. I think this map, when you look at it, states that this is not a single-family neighborhood. I know we have an RL zoning here, but if you look, there is significant multifamily units there. In fact, where my property is, the property directly to the north is an 11plex. The property directly to the south is a sixplex. This fits well within the density. This zoning change provides a low to moderate density, something well within the established character of this neighborhood. Some concerns may be that this development could lead to gentrification. I would argue that adding thoughtful, moderate-density housing, we're actually allowing families that otherwise couldn't afford to live here to have an opportunity to live here. The land value of this property on the open market is $300,000. If we, and I think Mayor Adam Check, to your, to your point about, you know, transitioning this thing back to a single-family home, this land value is $300,000. If we mandate single-family homes, it only limits accessibility. And this option would require a four to five to $600,000 rehab to make that happen. As a city, are we wanting to move in the direction of disincentivizing affordable housing units in our core and only allowing for 700, 800,000, $900,000 homes along City Park when we need desperately the housing stock? You know, I think a concern is also, what if, are we worried about spot rezoning? If we rezone this property, what if we rezone a property in another neighborhood, in my neighborhood over here and this single-family neighborhood over there? Spot zoning may be a concern to some people, but I think it's important to remember what this neighborhood is. It's part of our city's core. 60% of the multifamily housing is here. There's a lot of rental. There's a lot of owner-occupied properties. For 75 years, this was zoned significantly higher. What we're doing is not a drastic change. This is a balanced approach in a neighborhood long accustomed to this higher density. And finally, it's just, I want to speak to Commissioner Moda's point about the 2015 down zoning. You know, it's been referenced a couple of times here, this property, 70 years, high density. Now we moved it down to to RL, which is single-family zoning. This is an important point. And I know, and I can appreciate Commissioner Moda's point that, you know, we zoned this down in 2015. Now, if we're going back, is that a concern? I think we have to think what has happened in the last decade in our society. There's been a lot that's changed in the last nine years. Housing costs have risen by almost 65%. All of our housing studies talks about how desperately our community and all the communities across the country need workforce, affordable, walkable housing. That's changed dramatically in the last 10 years. This rezone allows us to respond to those needs with affordability and sustainability. Just because the city made a decision a decade ago doesn't mean that we can't take stock of where we are today and say, man, we might need to make some thoughtful adjustments to make Manhattan a better place for tomorrow. So I just encourage you not to focus on maybe a decision that wasn't a great decision 10 years ago and say, we need to stick with that because it was maybe not a great decision then. So with that said, I'd ask you to really consider city staff's recommendation and my presentation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any follow-up questions?
Yeah. Gavin, can you talk about some of the renovations that would need to happen in your, in your mind that to this property to make it safe and livable?
Yeah. And and I'm going to make one more note as well. This property is currently under contract with me. So I have not purchased this property yet. This property and this purchase is contingent on this rezone. So, yeah, I mean, as far as what renovations are need to be done, I didn't want to just put up a bunch of pictures because I don't own this home yet. I didn't think that would be appropriate. But one of the units currently is unlivable. It's uninhabitable. There's broken glass. There's mold. It's a real problem. There's foundation work that's crumbling away that would take just seismic amount of renovation. Again, there's also three units there. So now we're talking about, there's a wall where the staircase is. You're going to have to blow that out, add structural. It it's quite a process. Like I said, we're talking a four to $500,000 renovation to make something like this happen on top of the $300,000 purchase price that would happen. So you're you're going to be in this property for somewhere between 700 and $900,000 is a fair estimate where we would be.
John, do you have any questions for Gavin?
No, not really. I mean, I appreciate this development point and the cost that he just went through, which is what I'm debating in my mind that, you know, we've, we've got this RL for this whole area, but is it a, is it a practical zoning that's, that's there? That's where, and I think it's, it's, doesn't seem good to keep a certain zoning for the whole area if we're going to go individual ones and change it here and there. So, again, just thinking through the issue. I appreciate the information.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Is there any comment from the public regarding this item?
Scott Seal, 1608 Denholm. I wanted to talk about several things. A lot of these points have already been brought up, but I think it's important to reiterate as well. First of all, I, I didn't remember those seven criteria, and I think that's, that struck me as as really important because I think there is some concerns here that are valid and have a lot of, but, but the, the reality of what the commission's choices are here is that we have to weigh those seven criteria. And I would challenge, if we're thinking about opposing this, I, looking at those seven, would find it difficult to pick out which one of those seven this does not meet. And if we're in a situation where it feels like we're not maybe totally sold, but what we're charged with doing is, does it meet the seven criteria, yes or no? And so if it does, then I think you would need a pretty compelling reason to go against that since that's what we've set as our own criteria for whether we determine a zoning change or not. And as Gavin said, we're, we're not talking about changing it from residential to commercial or, you know, it's, it's a very small distinction between single-family attached and single-family As Gavin and and city staff pointed out, this area is predominantly multifamily already. It's been zoned for at least two or more units for 90 of the past 100 years. And most of the units around it are already multifamily. I did just a quick study of just looking at Humboldt to Oseage, 10th to 11th. There are five houses in that little two-block area that the mailing address and the property address on the county parcel search are the same. So we're talking about five single-family homes, or five owner-occupied homes, I should say, within that two-block area. So we're not dramatically changing the conditions that are already existing on the ground, regardless of what the zoning map says. And also, these homes, they talked about the disincentive to invest in these homes. I see this all across the city. I've stood in front of us this body and talked about it before, homes that are stuck in limbo, where investors, owners, property owners can't invest in them because they have a dagger on a string hanging over their head, which is, if, if anything happens, or if, because I have a nonconforming property that could change, and they can't sell them for the same reason, because a buyer looking at it said, I'm not going to buy a property that doesn't conform to zoning. So they can't fix them up and they can't sell them. And so what happens is they just sit and they continue, what I always say, losing a fight with gravity over time. And there's so many like this out there, and the only way that we can do something with them is to change it so that the, the zoning actually matches what is there or what would be the best use. And I, I appreciate that the 2015 down zoning has been brought up multiple times here, and I think I have a little bit of a unique perspective, and I know, I think Commissioner McCullough, were you? And so I stood in front of this body and supported the 2015 down zoning because I thought it was a good idea. I believed in bringing some of these rich historic properties back into the single-family fold. I wanted that to happen. The reality is it didn't work. We, we've seen very, very few homes in these, of these converted multifamily properties go back to single-family. And, and in the climate that we're in today, as far as construction costs and things like that, to convert this home back to single-family, and not even necessarily because of what's there, if nothing else, just from the sheer size of the building, the cost to do so would be so astronomical. And I couldn't sell it on the back end. That's the biggest thing for me is I, I can't sell an $800,000 house at 11th and Humboldt. And so there's no incentive, there's no economics that work unless you just want to do what Jim Bonnie Shiro did and just accept that you're going to lose a bunch of money to make a home beautiful, which is wonderful, but most people don't have the ability to do that. And so, again, the result of that is the houses just sit there and nothing happens. And they stagnate and they get worse and worse and worse over time. And then to the point where, where we find ourselves today, where the only viable option is to tear it down. So thank you very much for your time, and we appreciate your consideration.
Good evening. My name is Michael Missary, and I live at 1015 Leavenworth, which is across the street from these properties in question. I have a lot more to say than I have time, but I do have some prepared comments, so. Okay, so while I understand why an investor might see opportunity when looking at neighborhoods like ours, it is not an appropriate location for a spot-zoned infill project. We have lived in this neighborhood for over 20 years, and we have neighbors who have been there much longer than that. This neighborhood has been very stable for a long time. People have spoken about the zoning being there for 70-plus years. The reason it got down zoned was partly because, yes, there are homes with apartments, but there's not a lot of large infill projects that have been added. Even, so it has been stable for a long period of time, even when we had zoning designation allowing much higher density. And that is why in 2015, when the city was going through its long-range planning process, our neighborhood was down zoned as a trade-off to the upzoning that occurred east of campus. We, along with many of our neighbors, were thrilled with the protection, with the protection this would afford our most important investment, our homes, or so we thought. Now, with this proposed development and the current slate of city planners supporting this proposal, the stability of our neighborhood has been significantly thrown into doubt, and the trust we placed in our local government officials has been shaken. Now, I'm not a person who says that nothing should ever change in our historic neighborhoods. Ever since I graduated from Kansas State University in 1994 with a degree in architecture, I have been designing and building projects in our historic neighborhoods and can, and continue to do so to this day. My company currently has two infill projects under construction in our historic neighborhoods. But this is something different. When projects come from residents who live in a neighborhood, they tend to be much more appropriate and well-accepted than those instigated by outside investors looking to extract profit. Our neighborhoods are not fodder waiting for, waiting to be exploited by opportunists. They are our homes, just like you have your homes and neighborhoods that you care about, hopefully just as much as we care about our neighborhood. It is healthy for communities to adapt and evolve over time. Daniel Harrages is an expert with master's plan, master's degree in urban and regional planning and is a frequent contributor to Strong Towns Journal and a co-author with Charles Marone of the book Escaping the Housing Trap, where they examine and lay out their research on the housing crisis and how to maintain strong and healthy communities. The problem we are seeing is, in many cases, there are few winners and many losers. That is not a way to maintain a healthy community. The instability it causes can have long and wide, wide-ranging effects. The problem they've identified is that it is there either stagnation and slow decay, slow decay, which we have heard this evening. decay, which we have heard this evening, or a cascade of redevelopment that scours our neighborhoods of their former identities. And we can see this happening very clearly in the upzoned area to the north. There tends to be a trickle of investment or a fire hose blast, and not much in between. Their organization, Strong Towns, has developed a two-rule, a two-part rule for maintaining strong and healthy towns. Number one, no neighborhood can be exempt from change, and no neighborhood should experience sudden and dramatic change. I know you can say that this is only one project and one little zone, rezone, but the issue here is that you're not only looking at a request for spot zoning, which shouldn't be allowed, but the precedence it will set is that it will introduce a slippery slope that our neighborhood will not likely be able to recover from. Commissioners, our historic neighborhoods are something special. They are what we ground, are what grounds us and connects us to our past. It is why tourists go to see communities that have their historic neighborhoods still intact. Residents of a community need stability and predictability without the threat of invasion, which is not unlike Ukraine fighting to maintain its identity and sovereignty. When thinking about the nine years since 2015 and why we may not have seen much investment in East Park neighborhood, as all of us might have hoped, just think about what the last nine years have been like: COVID, inflation, high interest rates, all of which are challenging for owners, and especially new owners of single-family housing. That is why I think the city-
Excuse me, you need to finish your remarks.
All right.
Your remarks are finished.
I thank you so much for your consideration.
Can I ask a question? Mike, I appreciate you bringing up Strong Towns. I've followed them a lot on social media and read a lot of their articles. And, you know, you talked about the no investment versus fire hose investment. What does investment look like to you in the middle that would be appropriate?
So we own the house behind us. It's a four-unit house. And that, I mean, they talk about the people not wanting to invest. When we purchased that house, we purchased it because at the time it was high-density, and the developer was going to tear it down and build a twelve-pelx. We paid more than we should have for that house. And, but we have slowly invested, invested, invested. The house was in terrible, way worse than the ones that we are talking about today. But we have slowly put money and money and money into that house. Now we have four units. They're always rented, and we have tenants that have been there, we have some tenants that have been there almost 10 years. So, I don't know. Yeah, it's a risk. We couldn't rebuild or whatever. I'm fine with turning that back into a single-family house. I mean, it's just, there's a lot of difference of opinion between certain folks and other folks, us included, so, yeah.
Thanks.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Kathy Javotowski. I live at 100 South Delaware Avenue. The neighborhood we're talking about tonight was downzoned in 2015, as been mentioned several times, following an extensive, months-long process, of which I participated in a lot of those meetings, of updating a comprehensive plan with guidance from a consultant. One of the specific changes to zoning identified as necessary in order to implement key concepts of the updated comprehensive plan was to rezone the residential areas east of City Park to lower density to stabilize the single-family character of the neighborhood, provide predictability, and increase owner confidence in reinvesting in their properties. The analysis conducted at the time, as well as extensive public input, concluded that it would be beneficial to downzone the neighborhood with a resulting impact similar to what has occurred in the neighborhoods west of City Park. The intent of the downzoning in 2015 was to strengthen single-family and traditional neighborhood characteristics and reduce the potential for higher-end density development. It's also worth mentioning that while this area was identified for downzoning, the trade-off was that other areas closer to the K-State campus were identified for higher-density housing types. In June 2021, the Manhattan Urban Area Planning Board discussed non-conforming properties, such as the two being discussed tonight, and the staff memo noted that the idea is that non-conforming uses get phased out over time. And the section on non-conformities in the Manhattan Development Code reflects this thought process. The language in the Manhattan Development Code notes that non-conforming properties should be permitted to exist and be used productively, but with the goal of bringing them into conformity over time. This is to be accomplished by limiting the expansion of uses or structures, not allowing abandoned uses to be reestablished, by preventing rebuilding of more than 50% of the structure's values damaged. Based on the summary of the neighborhood meeting that took place, it seems the applicants are seeking rezoning so their structures could be rebuilt with the same number of units in the event they were significantly damaged by fire, tornado, and so on. The impact of this request is more than just a zoning change. As it stands now, if a non-conforming property is intentionally demolished, it can only be rebuilt in compliance with its zoning. If this rezoning is approved, the owners will be able to intentionally demolish their structures and rebuild them with the same number of units, essentially allowing what amounts to a non-conforming use to continue, instead of phasing it out as laid out in the Manhattan Development Code. It would also establish a path that could potentially lead to older affordable housing getting demolished throughout all the older neighborhoods. And as someone who lives in an older neighborhood, that worries me a lot. If the proposed rezoning is approved, it will establish a precedent for other owners of non-conforming properties in this neighborhood, potentially leading to owners seeking the same rezoning and resulting in a checkerboard of zoning districts. Does the checkerboard of different zoning districts support stability and predictability for property owners, instill confidence that they should continue to invest in their properties, or enhance the single-family and traditional character of the neighborhood as was intended when the area, excuse me, when the area was downzoned in 2015, or will it reroad all of these things? The same staff memo from June 2021 went on to say, quote, "It is understood that the planned changes for an identified area could take a long time to achieve," end quote. Are the nine years that have passed since the area was downzoned considered a long time, such that now it seems appropriate to allow other zoners to infiltrate the area? I don't know. You get old enough, nine years is not really a very long time. In 2015, this neighborhood was identified as an important location to help address the community's housing needs, as this is a desirable area due to its central location, existing infrastructure, and generally lower land costs, creating opportunities for families and others looking for affordable housing options. At the October 22 city commission meeting, it was mentioned, and it was mentioned again tonight, that Manhattan isn't building new starter homes because it isn't economically feasible, so it's important for Manhattan to preserve its existing housing stock, which arguably can be found in this neighborhood. The rezoning has the potential to discourage buyers looking for a starter home from investing in the neighborhood if they can't feel confident that adjacent properties won't be rezoned to something not desirable to be living next to. I also want to mention, since the applicant mentioned this, he doesn't currently own the property. He knew what the zoning was before he got interested in buying it, and that didn't apparently affect anything. In conclusion, for all these reasons, I would like to urge commissioners to not approve the rezoning request.
Thank you, Kathy. Is there anyone else who would like to make any remarks?
Mayor, commissioners, good evening. My name's Tyler Holloman, 607 Missouri. In full transparency, I have had conversations with the applicant about including this in a broader workforce housing initiative. As someone who has been through successful rezonings, I know that your decision tonight needs to be based strictly on the rezoning criteria that are laid out in the Manhattan Development Code. I believe that Barry's staff report, Stephanie's presentation, and Gavin's remarks have all done a really good job at clearly demonstrating that those criteria are met in this application. Rather than further elaborating on those, I'd like to just take a few minutes and just talk to you more globally about infill development. As a former member of the Workforce Housing Steering Committee, I spent nearly two years working with other members of the committee, including Commissioner Motta, discussing workforce housing programs, policies, and best practices. The result of those efforts was a memo that was provided to you earlier this year. I won't read you the whole memo, but I would like to just read a few points from that memo. The Workforce Housing Steering Committee's summary of recommendations, which was introduced to you this summer, states, "The recommendations from the Workforce Housing Steering Committee include regulations, policies, and a funding allocation framework. The following summarizes the recommendations. Under regulations, review comprehensive planning and zoning regulations to increase density and housing type, material use, legal formation, development pattern, and unit makeup," and parentheses, "missing middle housing." Skipping down a little bit, under policies, add housing capacity in and around key community amenities, including employment centers, shopping districts, schools, and walkable areas. And finally, under funding allocation framework, take advantage of existing tools and programs versus creating new ones, focus on infill and reuse developments, and when possible, leverage grants, loans, or financing mechanisms such as moderate-income housing, rural housing, incentive districts, and industrial revenue bonds. I read that to you today to demonstrate that, as a community, we know what needs to be done to improve our housing situation. We've seen it reflected in this memo. We've seen it, we've heard it discussed in two years' worth of workforce housing and housing market analysis meetings. It's in the Housing Market Analysis, our comp plan, and even shows up in the Economic Growth Report recently commissioned by the chamber. To address the housing needs in our community, we have to be willing to consider zoning changes and policy adjustments. As a real estate professional and area employer, I see firsthand the need for workforce housing in this community. We simply need more housing. We know we need more housing, period. Our urban core needs density to support sustainable growth and to create vibrant, walkable neighborhoods. In closing, in my opinion, this rezoning request from residential low to residential low attached is a common-sense solution to address the growing need for moderately-priced infill housing. This rezoning would pave the way for a project that will benefit our workforce and our city as a whole. I would appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Tyler.
Hi, I'm David Javotowski. I live at 100 South Delaware. I've been joking with my wife that I'm becoming that crazy person that talks at city commission meetings too often. I think I really never went to meetings. I was either new, think I've done this regularly, and it's like, no, not at all. One reason I'm talking today, and I didn't plan on it, is, and the overall theme here is starting to really bother me. And that is, today we're having this great election, country split, but we have these democratic processes in place. And hope, you know, and so people are forgetting that we have democratic processes in place. And, and we're trying to impose economic development strategies and forget about the democratic process. And the, you know, the market's a wonderful thing. People with diverse preferences, us crazy people that spend way too much money renovating houses because we want to live downtown, can. I'm spending a lot of money on our house, and we have. And we love it, and we chose to live here. We don't want to live out on the golf course. We want to live here, downtown. So that's the market. And now you've zoned things. It's supposed to change the incentive structure. That was the point. It's supposed to disincentivize. That was the democratic participatory process. So, if we want to change things now, and maybe we do, let's go through another process. Or, let's figure out how towns around the country are incentivizing better revitalization. Let's do that. I think it'd be great. Let's figure out how to achieve what the zoning was supposed to do. It was supposed to disincentivize, because the public says that's what we wanted. And now we're coming in and saying, "Oh, developer, we're going to respond to you." Thank you.
Good evening. I just want to comment on two pieces of the conversation tonight.
Josh, your name and address.
Oh, sorry. Josh Brewer, Executive Director, Habitat for Humanity of the Northern Flin Hills. I live at 410 Fremont Street. I live in a historic neighborhood. I love historic neighborhoods. We moved to Manhattan because, in part, we could find a home here in the historic neighborhoods that are walkable. I think two of the dominant contexts of this conversation tonight are zoning and neighborhood revitalization. Zoning is a tool that has historically been used in an exclusionary manner. It has excluded people from neighborhoods based on class and race. Zoning is a tool that has been negatively used. Zoning is not the tool, especially, single-family exclusionary zoning is not the tool that can be used to build neighborhoods. There are better tools out there. If we want to build neighborhoods from the inside out, from the bottom up, as we believe that we can do in asset-based community development, single-family exclusionary zoning is not the way forward. There's better tools. There's land banks. There's community land trust. There's neighbor-led initiatives that can acquire properties and steward them to be the asset in the neighborhood that they can be. They can reach their full potential. And I think that that's really the aspirational part of the conversation that I'm hearing this evening from the community members, which is amazing, is people looking at their neighborhood and saying, "I want this neighborhood to be the best it can be, and I see its full potential." And we believe in a holistic, resident-centered strategy to make that happen. If we rely too much on single-family zoning to accomplish those goals, what we'll ultimately end up doing is pricing out those residents that have been disafforded the privilege of living in these wonderful communities. So I would encourage us to continue looking at these conversations from the perspective of neighborhood revitalization, and move beyond the type of single-family exclusionary zoning language that we've become so accustomed to. We can make these neighborhoods great without this zoning tool. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Judee Misery, and I live at 1015 Leavenworth, and, which is a home where I want to point out that our taxes have increased a lot. So, we, somebody had mentioned that the homes in this area, their taxes do not increase. Ours have. We, I want to point out that, I just really want every, all the commissioners in here to respect, I guess, the research that has been completed by the planning board, the neighbors, those of us who live in this area, and so forth, and what we know about this neighborhood. We are trying to encourage people to live in the city center. We, and we did that by doing that whole downzoning in 2015, to try to help do that. It has, by rather than rezone, we provide maybe some encouragement through incentives for people to purchase these historic homes and restore them. We talk about tax abatements and so forth. I've been listening to, that have, not to deal with this particular rezoning issue, but like Joe Knop was saying earlier and so forth, we provide these opportunities to other people, but not to these, to people to come in and restore these homes, to make them better. And when we do, there is, it becomes a big tax issue to do so. And we own, like Mike had mentioned earlier, we own both 1010 Homeboat and 1015 Leavenworth, both homes. As we fix them up, the taxes increase. And so, there isn't a whole lot of incentive for some people to- And so there isn't a whole lot of incentive for some people to come in and do that. No, we're crazy, like the Chivoltowskis, to come in because we like this kind of, we like to live in the city center. I don't think we're the only ones. We like historic homes, I don't think we're the only ones. And I think when we're not the only ones, we have people that want to come and live in the city center. We attract, we have these historic homes that attract other peoples to come to see our city, so we attract people to the city. But we also attract those who invest in the city center, to invest in our community, which we have done. So we, a couple of things, I'm sorry about my notes, I'm not reading them. I am concerned, I did want to mention, there are three lots that we're talking about with this project. Everybody keeps talking about two lots because there's two homes, but there is actually three lots there, which means there could be nine units. That would make it look very different than you're saying, I'm putting three units on this lot and three units on that one, and I just wanted to point that out. The other, I am concerned about the historic architecture. If you can come in, and I understand people coming in and making homes that are for workforce housing and so forth, but to make it look like the character of the neighborhood and so forth, they can do, you can have some stringent-type things, but you can see where this has not worked. There has been homes, where we lived on Colorado Street, there has been homes that were built across the street from us, and as long as they pitched the roof here and put a kind of pillar up in the front, then it made it look like, I guess it fit the bill of what they want the architectural style to look like, but it did not. It just looks like a four-square home with a pitched roof and a couple pillars, and you probably know what I'm talking about. So those are the concerns that I have. I would really like to see, and it's not this issue with the rezoning right now, but I would really like to see the city possibly consider offering tax incentives or so forth to people when they're in the process of rehabbing these homes, some sort of that piece of it that might help encourage the downzoning that we want, and incentivizing the revitalization of this area.
Stephanie, can you address what she said about three lots?
Yeah.
Thank you.
You are going to probably ask me, how did we build these homes with the existing lot structure? I do not know, because it was in the 1920s-ish. But this has never been platted outside our original town plat, and so what is being referred to? So here are the two parcels that are in question this evening. You can see that the lot lines that Riley County recognizes, that the building permit would have shown, that this lot is going north and south, and then this lot is this entire half-block. The original town plat did have three lots here, so there would have to be a replat of some sort to, if these structures were ever demolished and something wanted to be put back there, to make that, to clean that up.
Would that require both owners to, like, make a joint application, since they're perpendicular to each other?
No, so this owner could just end up replating their lot as you see here.
Okay.
If they would like, if they would choose to do so.
And that would then just have two lots?
Yeah. And we would, I'm saying this based on what's on GIS, this would probably require a little bit of research on our part, again, to figure out how this was allowed to proceed by crossing over these three different lots. So we would have to go back and look at some of the research of that.
Okay. But historically, it's been two lots?
Correct, yes.
GIS is showing?
So the original, the green lines are the original town plat.
Okay.
We have a lot of different areas in this historic area of town. You'll see, like, down here, the same thing occurred.
Okay.
I don't, I cannot speak to the history of how that was allowed or why that was allowed, but the lines that you see in gray, that is what Riley County recognizes, that's what they use to assess the property taxes, and that's the legal description of the tract that we would use right now.
Is that what we would use to determine building permits?
Of the current lots?
Yeah.
Yes, so if they wanted to come in and they wanted to establish a building here on this half-block lot, that's what we would use.
Okay.
Same with this property right here as well.
All right, got it.
Commissioners, I had very much hoped that we would conclude this discussion before taking a break, but I need to take a break. So we'll adjourn for about 10 minutes and resume at 8:25.
That's right, we don't need a base, it could be anywhere except for...
People, if you will... Hello, if you will return to your seats, we will resume. Mel, I've seen you get up a couple of times, are you planning to make some remarks? Are you planning to make some remarks?
I am. Mel Boris, 1918 Humboldt Street. If this proposal is approved, it will set a precedent to spot zone elsewhere that will further encourage the destruction of other homes and yards anywhere in this neighborhood and anywhere in other traditional historic neighborhoods not protected by historic districts. The massive increase of lot coverage and reduction of front and side yard setbacks that were adopted for the Manhattan Development Code in 2022 have facilitated accelerated destruction of historic property and neighborhood character, leaving massive structures that loom over their neighborhoods and pavement over the remaining yard. Spot zoning would only further increase opportunities to destroy our community's historic neighborhoods that had been protected by downzoning and traditional neighborhood overlay districts before lot coverage and setback regulations were changed by our city planners during the pandemic. As such, I strongly encourage you to deny this spot zoning proposal and request that answers from our city government be provided for these questions. Why have our city planners ignored the Manhattan Urban Area Land Use Plan's strategic guidance to protect and enhance our historic national, traditional neighborhoods? And this addresses, I think that's standard two. In conflict with the Land Use Plan guidance, why did our city planners cease communication with traditional neighborhood associations after the plan was adopted and this neighborhood was downzoned in 2015 as an additional protection beyond the Land Use Plan? Along with the massive increase in lot coverage and reduced setbacks with the adoption of the Manhattan Development Code, why did our city planners also zone City Park for high-density housing? Was that a tool to justify spot zoning as a step-down to the single-family zone neighborhoods, not only on the east side of the park, but on the west side of the park, as was done to the East Potawatomi Avenue neighborhood? If the conduct of our city planners has been directed to increase tax revenue, perhaps it would be best if our city government publicly reveal the strategic plan, so citizens can decide if they still want to invest in the future of Manhattan's historic traditional neighborhoods. And I would like to respond to a few other things. The front yard setback is not an average of the existing setbacks of the homes on the street, because they're now allowed to march forward by a certain percentage, and we're starting to see this march of structures closer and closer to the sidewalk, and it's really disruptive to the neighborhood rhythm, the character. There is a real problem with not being able to reconstruct if more than 50% of a structure is lost. The goal of downzoning was not to eliminate the converted homes, because in some cases, you know, that, well, we used converted homes to, you know, to live in ourselves, it helped with our home expenses. But when it was downzoned in 2015, the neighborhood was, there was 100%, destruction could still be rebuilt. It was just with the Manhattan Development Code, I believe, came, if more than 50% is destroyed, a net would not be, as you heard, attractive to invest in. Tomorrow, I'll be going over to Elaine Shea's house, which is right next, adjacent east to this area that you're considering to spot zone. And what do I tell her if this is approved? That she can have a huge structure within four feet of her home, where now she can, she's got a beautiful white Victorian home there on a large lot, she's lived there with her family and helped take care of my family for years, but, you know, she can look out there now across the driveway and see a beautiful bungalow there that's been converted to apartments and very stable. In fact, there's a very nice car that sits in that driveway, comes and goes. But what do I tell her? So, thank you.
Stephanie, can we get some more specifics on the neighborhood overlay restrictions that would still be in place?
I was just pulling those up.
Thank you.
So bear with me, I don't work in this section of our code very often, but some of those, so the very first one that I mentioned with the neighborhood, established neighborhood overlay, is that we do restrict that there's only three-unit townhomes. We don't allow that full five that typically would be in an RLA district. For the front setbacks, if there's more than four houses along that block, we do look... we do look at the average of those setbacks. If there's one that is, uh, further than twenty feet back, we kind of, uh, we kind of throw that one out, and then we just use the existing structures. And then what we say is based on that average, you can't deviate more than, I think it's seven feet in either direction. You'll see in some of our established neighborhoods, that setback isn't just all twenty feet along the, uh, from the curb or from the property line like we see on new subdivisions. So we try to keep that kind of, uh, that pattern of, of where the houses sit. Some other ones for, um, let's see, for compatibility, so new, we do limit new driveways and curb cuts. If there is alley access, then lots, uh, I believe that lots have to use that alley like our traditional neighborhoods had. If there is an existing driveway, they can keep that. But there's only one curb cut, curb cut that would be permitted for each lot. For on the off chance there's multiple, one of those would have to be eliminated. We also restrict any new driveways. They can't be wider than ten feet because the older driveways in our established neighborhoods, uh, they were typically more narrow. Let's see, we have certain, um, requirements for garages to make sure that those are consistent with the look and the feel of our established neighborhoods. We do have a street tree requirement for those. We also have, uh, for garages, they have to be setback from the front facade of the home so that the garage isn't that main focus of it. You just let me know when you want me to stop. But so there are, and I'll, I'll leave it with this, and if we want to go on, we can. There are building design compatibility, so we look at the ori- orientation of the building, of the materials, the cladding of it. We have very specific requirements for porches and how those can stick out into the setback or if it is enclosed, what that looks like. I've talked about the, the roof pitch earlier, and, um, there, it, like, I'm only on point eight and it goes down to eleven. So we, we have very strict standards there really to try to, and keep the integrity of, again, any new structures that would come in or a substantial remodel to any of the existing properties there.
Stephanie, do you want to return to and make your clarification as well?
Yes, I asked the mayor if I could clarify. Commissioner Repel, you asked about the, uh, plating and if that would have to occur. And I, um, so we do not, I mentioned that we only have the original town plant, plat, and you saw that there were the three lots that went east and west. I wanted to clarify, if they were to make any changes to the existing structure, we would not require that to be replatted. If there was, um, any sort of addition added on to that structure or if they, um, built a new structure, at that point, we would require them to replat, um, dedicate. We would look at if there's any easements or right-of-way that would need to be dedicated along with that. And because those existing lot lines from our original town plat do cross into the property to the east, that owner would also have to, to be a party of, of that plat.
So this could potentially, the replating of this would clarify those lines a little bit?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Stephanie, would it allow, um, development of nine units rather than six?
Uh, I would need to, I would need to check if you can keep the existing three lots as they're platted with our, our town plat. And then I would need to see if those structures would meet our parking requirements, the, the lot, uh, width and meet all the setbacks requirements. So I can't answer that without doing, um, looking at each of those lots and putting on their three townhomes to see if it meet, would, it would meet all of our minimum requirements.
Seems like it'd be pretty restrictive if they wanted to do that, um, just logistically.
We have seen the super duplexes though built.
You can't fit a super duplex on one of the.
No, you can't now because we changed the rules when we did the comprehensive land use plan.
Okay.
Is there anyone else who would like to make any public remarks?
Hello, uh, my name is Olivia Misery. I'm sixteen years old and I live at ten fifteen Leavenworth. You say you want affordable housing, but is it just an excuse for greed? When you go to other towns, cities, states, or countries, do you look for townhomes? No, you go for the unique architecture, maybe such as Italy. Our town may not have buildings as old, but if we actually preserve them, they will be historic, even more historical in the future. The protection of this neighborhood was put down for a reason. I've already seen protected neighborhoods that have historical houses be destroyed. It will always be one after another. After one is taken down, it will be the rest in the neighborhood soon after. Conformity is not the answer. You yourself can conform. This, that is your choice. You should go around, you should not go around destroying something already unique for money and conformity. There are empty pieces of land you can choose, so why this one? Anyone can choose the house down this, the houses down the street that all look the same. These townhomes will not be affordable, so then what is your reason? You should leave the unique neighborhoods alone while you can use other pieces of land that are protected, that are not protected, because most likely, my house would be next. I live diagonally across the street and I would hate to see a house that I've lived in, in my ti- uh, the, my entire life in to be eventually torn down. Everyone in this town has been living here, that has been living here for years would hate to see every town in the, every house in this ta- town to be torn down just to be rebuilt with houses that look the same as the next. You can restore these houses as well. I ask of you to stop letting these people rezone houses in Manhattan. The zoning is to preserve, not to negotiate. Zoning in Manhattan has been changed before, and I don't want it to happen to my neighborhood or frank, frankly, any other neighborhoods. I enjoy walking by unique homes like Victorian homes or mid-century homes. I do not care about, uh, neighborhoods where each home next, that are next to each other, look essentially the same. I like to see homes that make me turn my head and think about how cool and unique it is. You can change the inside of the existing home, but there's no need to completely tear it down using unnecessary money that you can use on restoring the house. I cannot fathom why you would want to tear down this house considering these ideas other than greed. You are able to make historic homes into single-family homes. There are land inside this town that is urbanized that you can use. If you think this home is beyond repair, then I'm sure you would think, claim that every old historic home in my neighborhood is cons- would be considered beyond repair. I've lived in this neighborhood my whole life. I know the, my neighbors, and they are in fine condition. Please do not claim to like historical housing if you are actively going against it. The historical preservation of homes are more important than single-family or the money it might take to restore them. Once the, you, once they are gone, they will never be back. The unique houses I look at, I love to look at on the side of the road will be gone. And when I get older, there would be none to buy, and I would be deeply disappointed. The preservation was put down for a reason. Please do not rezone this area. Thank you.
My name is Rex Fowles. I'm at twenty forty-eight Hunting Avenue. Maybe I can wrap this up, so you guys get on. I don't have much to say. I didn't think I was going to be coming to meetings like this in retirement either, so, uh, I don't know if I got any answers. I have a lot of questions. I've been, I was at the property, uh, the re- at the zoning board meeting, and I was pretty clear. Staff said there's three units, three units there per lot, and there's three lots there. So that needs to be clarified before you go any further, it seems to me like. What, you know, what is the most density you can put on that lot? I was disappointed a little bit in the staff evaluation report that didn't speak about homeowners. I saw the non-conforming properties, and I didn't see the whole pro- the whole neighborhood. I just saw three blocks from, uh, the screen. I would have liked to seen more of what's going on there. And I would like homeowners to be mentioned a lot more. I really think they're a, a big part of our community. I, I, I had a business. I had workforce. You need workforce, but, um, the people that are willing to invest there and live there are just really important. I wish they were mentioned and taken into consideration more. It looks like you've got a can of worms to me, though. It looks like, uh, if you're gonna do this, I'm against the spot zoning, so I think you need to have lots of discussions and maybe decide if you need to rezone it, if that's what you're gonna do. So, uh, I wish you luck there.
Good evening again, commissioners. Do I need to sign back in?
No.
Oh, okay.
Please state your name.
Mick Charney, fourteen twenty Waterford Place, member of the Historic Resources Board. I wish this were an issue that had come before the board because I stated in my remarks earlier that, um, the HRB under the CLG designation has a charge to look at.
What's GLB?
Uh, C- CLG, Certified Local Government.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Uh, we've been charged to, um, be leaders, to show some leadership in the designation of historic properties even before they are formally designated as such, nominated and listed. And, um, I don't have any notes, and so this is gonna be kind of stream of consciousness, and I hope I don't take the full five minutes. But one thing that's being neglected here, it's, it's been mentioned peripherally, I think, the quality of the architecture that's already there. The house right on the corner, the northeast corner of Leavenworth and, and, uh, Eleventh Street is a beautiful example of its particular sk- uh, style. It's a large house. It's a dominant house. I can understand why people would want to divide it up into rental units. But nevertheless, it has a presence there right at the end of Leavenworth when it T-bones into Eleventh, uh, at that entry on the east side of City Park. And I drive down that street a lot. I had no idea that this topic was gonna come up tonight in this sort of way. But I drive down that street and take that corner, that, all the time. And I just think to myself, what a beautiful sort of sequence of spaces. So I'm coming back to a sort of qualitative aspect. We can talk about codes and ordinances and setbacks and all that. But I look at the green lawn of that house, that corner house, and the trees, the old growth trees, and I see how nicely they coordinate with and harmonize with the green lawns and the trees across the street in City Park. And I imagine that the people who built that house were trying to make a statement about how it should fit into and how it should introduce and how it should, uh, coexist with the City Park to, to be read as one complete sort of spatial unit. And so, um, again, as I said before, I wish this issue had come before the Historic Resources Board, even though it's not technically still in the process of being nominated, if at all. But, um, it's just another opinion, just another perspective offering you. So thank you again for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. I just want to reiterate that I did ask everyone who wanted to make public comment to sign in earlier, and not very many of you did, and hence were waiting for each person. In the future, if you believe you're going to make remarks, will you please sign in the roster to start?
Hello, I'm Honey Tomas, and I'm seventeen years old.
Excuse me, please speak up. We can't hear you.
Hello, I'm Honey Tomas, and I'm seventeen years old, and I live in seven hundred fourteen Humboldt Street. I lived in this town throughout my childhood, and I experienced a lot of, like, changes throughout these neighborhoods and this town, a lot of construction going on, and which is great. I do like it growing, you know, every single year. But then, uh, things start to change nowadays, um, where the constructions are more questionable, if I like to say. And now, these constructions are now, like, tearing down old historical homes that used to be here for such a long time, and they're being torn down into something new, which, sure, I guess, uh, that's fine with coming, um, with, um, new homes and everything for new people coming in. But I feel like there's a lot of concerns with that, um, coming about, like, um, like, hmm, how would I say it? Uh, when it comes to the, um, the pricing of it, when it's released, everything, I understand when it comes to a lot of hard work and putting a lot of mount of pricing when renting or, um, I guess, selling these, um, homes for new people and stuff. But it's just that some of these prices are very, um, really just too much. And it's like a little concern when it comes to, like, what if there's new people, new citizens coming into this community, this new town, and they want to live in a new place, make a new life? And they're gonna have to struggle with purchasing a new home in which, like, yeah, that stuff's gonna be, like, very difficult for that. And like, majority of these, uh, neighborhoods, like, there are some neighborhoods, like, almost eighty percent of them are mostly used by college students and that stuff, and college students, they come in here and they come and go and every year and that stuff. And, um, like, I understand that, and there's all s- that type of stuff. And, um, I'm trying to get my words here. The major problem I just see is just, like, when these, um, constructions are done and everything and you have to put out the prices, it's just very difficult. Even so, like, I'm from a community of Hispanics and that stuff, from, um, a side of immigrant, I guess. And, like, it doesn't, it doesn't have to be me, but just also just new people, just new citizens just wanted to come into this town and find new housing. It's gonna be hard for them. And even so, with these modern houses being overpriced and everything, like, it's, I don't know, it's kinda be unfair for them. And also be unfair for, like, um, people who used to live in these historical neighborhoods for so long, seeing their homes being torn down to be replaced with these new modern homes and everything. Like, I don't know if you guys ever, like, even questioned the neighbors, given permissions and any requirements before, like, tearing these down? I'm not sure if there's like a, like, some kind of signature for these to be acceptable and then to be like, you know, you know, okay to do so, to tear these homes down. But I'm not sure if you ever considered, like, the people, the community's concern of what they think about these new ideas of new homes coming in, new constructions. And, uh, and some of these homes, some of their conditions are very good and everything, yet they're still being torn down for some reason, which, that doesn't make sense. Like, I understand if there's some places that need to be torn down, if they're in just in poorly condition, they're not suitable and not healthy for people living there. Like, I understand that, but for those that look, like, they, they look outside, they seem okay, the inside, they seem okay, but yet they're still being torn down, which doesn't make really sense. And, uh, it's just very sad for me, I guess, because I've been living through these home, living throughout these neighborhoods, this town, all my life. And, like I said, it's fine. I like you to see, to see this town grow and everything, to become better and that stuff. But now it's just becoming somewhat ridiculous at this point. And, yeah, I just like, I just feel like there should be, like, some recritization and, um, like, feeling, like, having the, just, I don't know how to say, but just think about what other people say and what their thoughts are before, like, agreeing to whatever you're planning on, um, tearing down these homes and buildings to put in, like, new construction, new buildings, new places to make this town better. Like, maybe, like, listen to the people's voices and their ideas and what they think and see if that's okay, and see if you can agree with those. Cause their voices could be much more different and all that stuff. But I'm not saying that can, like, all these, um, arts, art culture and that stuff is bad. It's fine, but, you know, just some recritization.
Thank you for your remarks. Thank you. I just want to clarify, one of, a point to you is that as part of the rezoning application, a public meeting was held with members of that community. Everyone was notified by letter. Two individuals showed up for the meeting, and I understand three other people phoned in comments. Okay, I think we've ticked off everybody over there except maybe one or two people. Are you all finished with your remarks? Anyone else? Yes?
I promise I will make it brief, uh, but I do think this is an important comment I need to make. It's really important to keep all of, all of these comments in context. It's really important to keep all of, all of these comments in context. There's been several people who have spoken up here after me. I think there's maybe three, maybe four houses that have spoken, but, you know, two, three, four members within one house. So sometimes it sounds like, oh my goodness, there's, there's a lot of opposition, but when you actually count addresses, it's just a few people. And I get it. There's a lot of emotion around rezoning neighborhoods. I can appreciate that. Words about infiltration, destruction of neighborhoods, even Russia and Ukraine got involved in this conversation. I understand this is, this is where people live. I can respect that. I live in Manhattan. I'm a, I'm a citizen. I go to, involved in a lot of things. So I understand that. This rezone is about seven criteria that have been outlined multiple times. It's important to focus on those seven criteria. I think it's easy to get caught up in emotion and get caught up into roof pitches and get caught up into green grass, but there's seven criteria that are supposed to be evaluated, and I hope that you guys can continue to look at those. I do have one point of clarification. The Comprehensive Land Use Plan does support low to moderate density, which is what RLA is. That is, that is what is supported in that. So number two, Comprehensive Land Use Plan supports this proposal. The other thing is I have no site control of that second lot, ten twenty Leavenworth. I don't, I don't own that. I don't have site control of it. That landowner, when I explained what was going on here, he has an non-conforming home as well, and he said, I'm in the exact same quagmire. I have this property that I'm stuck with. I think one of the commenters talked about a dagger over this property, and they said, well, they can't do anything. That's why he jumped in on this. But I have no site control over that property. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your consideration.
Commissioners, comments, observations?
I mean, I usually like to just jump in and talk about where I stand, and I do think the staff did a really great job with that report and looking at that criteria. Where I'm at, it, it fits. I think there's a lot of discussion, and a lot of the things I wrote down, people are saying that not desirable. They want a place where people want to live. I, I think this does all that. I think we got off topic, and people are talking about big monstrosities. This is RLA. This isn't a deviation, in my opinion, from the rest of the land use. So personally, where I'm at, and we can discuss it more, I'm supportive of the rezoning.
Peter?
Yeah, so I'll just, like, I, I agree with, with pretty much all of the staff report. You know, it, historically, aside from the last nine years, has been zoned for multifamily. This would allow this to conform into that. The land use map, again, yeah, it does conform, it does meet the RLM land use. I think when you look at an overhead picture of the neighborhood, again, right across the street from these two, ten nineteen Leavenworth, is an apartment building with a parking lot in the backyard. Right across the alleyway from these two is another apartment building with a parking lot instead of a backyard. So, you know, in terms of character of the neighborhood, this isn't changing the function of, of those properties. Adequacy of services, again, that's not a problem. We're, we're using the same amount of services. We're not going to increase density. Character of the neighborhood, same thing. We have a lot of multifamily. We talked a lot about people not wanting to invest in the neighborhood if we do this rezone, but we have people who want to invest in the neighborhood, but they cannot because it is not zoned appropriately. So, you know, what kind of investment do we want, and how, what is that, what is that, you know, how do we make that decision? Community need identified in an adopted plan. Housing, we need housing, we need units. I am not familiar with the conversation that happened in two thousand fifteen, but I do know what we are facing in front of us today. And when we look at the summary of recommendations from the Workforce Housing Steering Committee that was put in place by this body two years ago, review comprehensive planning and zoning regulations to increase density and housing type, it's very clear that this is what we need to do. When we look at strong towns, they are very much against single-family zoning because of the restrictions that it puts on density. I don't see anything in these seven criteria that is failed to be met with this request. I think if we are not comfortable supporting this, we should send it back to the zoning, the, the planning board, and they need to send specifics on what they do not find appropriate in this, in these seven criteria. We did not get that from them. I would also note that only five members of the seven-member board voted on this. One of them said that they had a conflict of interest. But again, they did not send any specifics as to why they were not recommending this approval. And I, I think that if we're not comfortable with that, that is our step. We need to make them send us specifics.
I think John will agree with me. We spent about two years on the Comprehensive Land Use Plan. We probably could have built a house out of the paperwork that came with that. And we decided at that time we would downzone this area and upzone an area north of Blument. If you look at what's happened in the last ten years, there has been not a huge amount of movement where we downzoned. Where we upzoned, there are practically no single-family houses anymore. They've all been driven out by living next to twelve complexes or sixteen complexes or that kind of thing.
But that's not what this is.
Yes, it is. It's, it's...
This is an RLA. It's the max of three. I mean...
This is saying that we're gonna go, that we are going to allow this group to put in possibly nine, I, I don't think it's compatible with the neighborhood, nine row houses, it'll be probably. We have, we do need housing, and we need workforce housing, but there are people living in these buildings that are there now. And quite frankly, the rents are not anywhere near what they'll be in the nine complexes that go on Eleventh Street.
And what would those...
Wait, wait, you gotta give me my turn. Now, we have definitely grandfathered some things in, and we're, we had hoped that there would be more turnover, and that some of these places, which quite frankly have paid for themselves ten times over, and the, you know, we always hear about this, well, if fifty-one percent burns, they can't rebuild. Well, of course, they can't rebuild because it'll be a basement saver. That's what you call that, because nothing's left. But they have insurance, they have, still have the property, the land. And people aren't just gonna be put out on the street because a fire destroyed their property, because they probably didn't have an adequate way to catch things early in the game. But you all, when you live in an older neighborhood, you get tired of constantly fighting the battle of trying to preserve the compatibility that you want to live in an older neighborhood. We live with students, we live with renters, but you have to keep the balance. If you get too heavy one way or the other, you, you lose your value. The whole point of zoning to me is to say to people, we, the city of Manhattan, have agreed that we will keep this at a certain zoning level. Therefore, you can put improvements into your property if you so choose. My neighborhood on the other side of the park was downzoned in about two thousand. Since then, we have seen the properties on Fourteenth Street probably quadruple in value. The property values all over my neighborhood because I know you can't put a triplex next to me. You can't put, you know, more housing, more cars. I, and, and these are neighborhoods with little bungalows. These are neighborhoods with small homes, and we should find some way that we can somehow turn these over into single-family units that the workforce can afford. That's, I mean, I just, I don't know why we're bringing this. It seems like we're always bringing these things up, and the people in our neighborhood feel like you're always nibbling away at our sort of rights to have rights.
So, I guess, Karen, I have a question. You said an older neighborhood.
Mm-hmm.
You're determining that based on the age of the houses?
No, I'm...
What, I guess I'm trying to figure out what that...
It's the way things were built in, at the turn of the century, that kind of thing. My house is a hundred years old. The size of the house, when I go out to Grand Mirror, the houses are quite large. They're built on small lots. It's a totally different sort of ambiance than you see in the older part of town. You see smaller houses on, with more green space, that kind of thing, and that's what I think we need to preserve. Now, I'm not saying that what's there now is, is great.
Right, because theoretically, the owner could just tear that down and rebuild.
Sure. A three thousand square foot, single-family?
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
They could.
They could, and it would cost a million dollars.
I, I mentioned that, I mentioned that I've had the opportunity to be in that home, and I was very much swayed by Scott's comments, and Gavin's, about the purchase price and what would be required to gut that building and rebuild something. And then, what, that in and of itself would overpower the rest of the neighborhood in some ways. I, I, I'm not a builder, I'm not a developer. I'm only guessing what it would cost to renovate that building. It, it's probably possibly not up to code as it is right now. There are, yeah, it was, I, I was not impressed when I... It's not a stately home any longer. It looks nice from the outside. If you don't look too closely at the crumbling foundation, if you don't look at the porch that's sagging, if you don't look at the crooked concrete stairs, where when we were moving a family into that building, we had to be, take extreme care and caution carrying things up those stairs. I, I'm finding this a very, very difficult decision. I've been committed since I joined the commission to advocate for affordable housing. We have had people throw that back in our face, trying to support substandard housing. I don't see a whole lot of people rolling in here saying, I love that house, I'm gonna, you know, I'm going to sink what it would cost to return that particular building to a single-family home. I am hopeful that the developers, if this passes, would be thoughtful about what they construct in that space. We, we only have so many requirements, as per Stephanie's summary, but... And I would, I would also say I'm not a fan of spot zoning, but I think it is something that we're spot rezoning. But if we are serious about trying to build more housing units in Manhattan, you all are as aware as we are about the limited space to build, particularly in the urban core.
Does this give us more housing units, though? I mean, I'm not saying the same caliber of housing units, but we have that many housing units right now. So we're not really, you know...
But these would be houses for purchase, not for rent.
And they would also be livable condition. If we allow this house to be torn down and a single-family home rebuilt, should someone decide that they wanted to do that, we would then lose housing. Instead of, our very clear goal this entire year has been to either maintain or gain more housing.
With an impact on the neighborhood that might make many people not wish to live there with that much more traffic and more...
It's not more.
Karen, which, which one of the seven?
Compatibility.
Findings?
And, and quite frankly, I, I don't like to overrule the planning board. I don't care if there are only five people there.
They also did...
I mean, if, if, if this is all just building the same thing in the same place and doing the same, why do, why, why do we have to change? Why do we have to spot zone it?
Because they can't build anything new because it's non-conforming. Currently, it is a multifamily home in a single-family unit, which RLA does not restrict anybody from building a single-family home. So if people wanted to go and buy an old house and convert it back to a single-family home, there's nothing stopping them after we do this.
Of course. I'm sorry, but I'm just telling you where I'm coming from as a homeowner in the older neighborhoods. And I think you've heard from many people who feel the same way and feel that the city is... We, you have to understand, when we did the Comprehensive Land Use Plan, we didn't just say in two days, this is it. We talked about this. We went into great depth, talking about the benefit to this area from not having overbuilding and putting the overbuilding across from, you know, north of... And if you look at the property north of Blument, you're gonna see that the single-family houses are gone. So, and, you know, we keep talking about we need housing of all different flavors, and we do. But we particularly need low-income housing, and this is not gonna be that.
John, what do you think?
Well, usually, I, with few exceptions, when these come up, I'm very protective of the homeowner's rights and to go along with the zoning that's in there. Because people bought property in a neighborhood based on the zoning, and we kind of said, that's what we're gonna do for you. The problem with this, again, if you go to the seven criteria, because we changed the zoning but have all these non-conforming uses, that's how you make a lot of these criteria fit because of how it was zoned for seventy-five years beforehand, and that still exists in there. So I have a hard time arguing that we're not meeting all the criteria, that we... And all we're supposed to decide tonight is this one case. So, I mean, that's what we need to do. But I think we need to kind of look at things overall later. So where I'm coming down is frankly on the side of the rezoning, but I really don't like it from the standpoint of we changed this and said we were gonna go with a certain zoning. But if you go by the criteria, it checks off the boxes. And I do think there's just some... I think there's some issues with staying with this current zoning in there in the neighborhood. But again, that's, that's a different topic. I think it's, it meets the criteria.
Commissioner, Jamie, do you want to?
I was, I was prepared to make a motion. I move we approve the First Read Amendment ordinance rezoning two lots from low-density RL with established neighborhood overlay, OEN district to low-density residential attached, RLA district with established neighborhood overlay, OEN district.
Second, clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Mayor Adamcheck?
Yes.
Commissioner McCullough?
No.
Commissioner Opel?
Yes.
Commissioner Mata?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitten?
Yes.
Motion carries four to one.
Thank you, everyone, for your input. I'm sure some of you are not leaving as happily as you might, but we appreciate hearing from all of you. Can we please take another five-minute break?
One hundred, one hundred percent sure. I don't know if there's any.
Karen?
To fund energy. Thank you, sorry. Um, we're reconvening our November fifth city commission meeting. We're moving on to item ten B. Consider sunflower flats updated and a request to fund an energy performance contract.
Good evening, mayor and commissioners. Thank you for your time. Also, thank you, Commissioner Mata is on our board as well and has been very helpful in that role over the last several years. I'm gonna start out by talking kind of about this project. And it includes Sunflower Flats, Carlson Plaza, Garden Grove one and two, and EPC, a lot of acronyms. Um, and AFEMA and HUD are AFEMA buyout as well. So there's a lot of moving pieces, but I wanted to start out at kind of that larger thirty-thousand-foot view. Talk about the EPC briefly, try to answer any questions that you might have. And then I'll turn it over to Garrick to go through Sunflower Flats, and you'll get to see some of the new, uh, we also have a video on that. This is the Fifth and Pierre site. This is from the roof of Carlson Plaza looking north towards downtown. And this is, on the left hand of the picture is the half of the site that we're working on developing for Sunflower Flats. Who's all involved? You've hopefully had a chance to look at this, but, um, so I won't read through the slides, but you got MHA, NCR is a big partner in this, and that's the National Church Residences. And they have Garden Grove one and two and Colorado Plaza that they're working on in conjunction with our project of Sunflower Flats. KHRC is on here. July nineteenth, Manhattan Housing Authority received a tax-credited award for, a nine percent tax-credited award for Sunflower Flats, which is kind of the impetus of why we're here tonight as well. So the different properties, people get confused, and this is one of the simpler sheets that we have. Um, I actually believe Commissioner Mata helped me put this together. Uh, there, there is Carlson Plaza, which was vacated in the spring of twenty twenty-three. It was vacated due to mold and asbestos issues. Once we came out of the pandemic and we were allowed to do inspections and get into the units, we found black mold, and the black mold and other mold had spread throughout the building. We had it tested. Um, we had it isolated in certain areas and had those residents relocated immediately, where we had other residents relocated over a portion of time that got us to February of twenty twenty-three, where the building was completely vacated. Section eighteen, the section eighteen deposition, disposition is part of the nineteen thirty-seven, uh, section eighteen of the nineteen thirty-seven Housing Act. Uh, that allows us to dispose or demolish of government properties. And, uh, we have tried, or we're in the process of going through disposition of Carlson Plaza for those forty-seven units of public housing. Can, National Church Residence, um, we'll skip over Colorado Plaza for now, but Sunflower Flats, um, and is connected to Garden Grove one and two, as you can see at the bottom here. Garden Grove one and two is located in West Loop area, west side of town, on Wildcat Creek flooded, and has a need for replacement housing. There's a FEMA buyout that the city's working through and that MHA is now part of and, and trying to help with as well to get an extension. Um, that extension's really essential so we can align up the replacement housing, which for Garden Grove one and two of Sunflower Flats development. And right now, the, the timelines don't line up in a way that is productive. So we're trying to seek an extension with FEMA as well. Overall funding sources, there's a, it's a real large mixture of funds. We have nine percent tax credit, I mentioned already, that ARPA funds, the American Rescue Plan, actually, and the strengthening people and revitalizing Kansas monies, the Spark. Um, that's what got consolidated into our abode grant. So we have one point five million for this abode grant. The restrictions on that are to get that expended by the second quarter of next year. So we're really, we have some urgency to expend that one point five million, um, or we lose it in essence. So that's through the Department of Commerce. We have FEMA mentioned here, and then HAB contracts that are on Garden Grove one and two. Those are twenty-year contracts that are really valuable because it, it preserves a subsidy on seniors for that housing in the community in perpetuity. And that's, uh, gets renewed over twenty years at a time. So it's a twenty-year auto renewal process for those contracts. And if we don't have a place for them to go, such as Sunflower Flats, we would lose those in our community. And all, all entities involved are, are not-for-profit. Our co, our co-developer, Oikos, um, Michael Snodgrass is a nonprofit. So there is no good transition to EPC that I could find, so that's my segue to straight into it. What is an EPC? It's an energy performance contract. It's something that my predecessor had worked with the city, or not necessarily the city, but worked with HUD to get, um, this mechanism in place between twenty fifteen and twenty seventeen. That energy performance contract totals one point three million, um, one point two nine seven million. And that paid for a lot of the rehab of energy efficiency with the apartment towers. Um, about eighty percent of that one point two million, two nine million went to apartment towers. But thirteen percent went to Carlson Plaza. And all of our properties received some, some of the rehab, um, EPC contract. And that, what, what did they do when they, what, what did they actually receive? The, it was like aerators, fixtures, light fixtures, just different pieces. So it's equipment essentially that was leased under the EPC to MHA, and thirteen percent of that is for Carlson Plaza. I mentioned the section eighteen application for deposition earlier. Uh, we can't proceed with that without, and we've, we've submitted it. We've done all of the other required steps. But HUD Energy Branch needs us to check off that we don't have anything owed on the EPC. We will have to buy out the EPC debt of Carlson, which translates to a hundred and seventy-three thousand, six hundred and nineteen dollars and thirty-six cents, or thirteen point three eight percent. Um, that is just, uh, uh, there is no going forward beyond that for Carlson Plaza. We, we can't get around it. We have to pay that back, and we don't have funding to pay that back. That was something that MHA never had received funds for, and we don't have any access to other funds to free. So but for assistance, um, we wouldn't be able to do anything with Carlson Plaza. And we can pause on there, and I want to tell you, if there's a question, is there a question?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, so when all of this EPC stuff got put in, um, did they not find black mold and all that fun stuff?
So, no, it was, I think COVID and part of the, the issues that we had without the, the regular maintenance for several years is what led up to it.
Okay.
Um, but no, not, Carlson wasn't in that, that shape that I'm aware of when they did this.
And so part of this contract, I'm assuming after so many years, we wouldn't have to buy it out or anything like that, or is that not?
So it, it actually terms up, uh, twenty twenty, twenty thirty-one. And so MHA makes payments on that part of this contract annually, which we budget for. And it's roughly, uh, the EPC is, actually, it's close to this amount total. It's about eighty thousand twice a year.
Okay.
And so it, this was just not budgeted for.
Right.
To be able to pay for it all at once and buy out that part.
Okay, got it, thanks.
Oh, okay.
I'll jump together here. I'm assuming everyone read the terms.
Okay.
What could be the source?
That, what sources are available that we might be able to utilize for funding buyout?
Yeah, we, we've talked briefly about how we could be able to, to allocate those dollars. And we, of course, do have some available funds in our fund balance. Um, but we also talked about an opportunity to use our, our workforce housing dollars towards, um, public housing projects.
Um, I, I'm, I'm okay with the idea of using workforce housing. I just want to make sure that it would align with the language that was in the sales tax question. That's, because I, I've brought up things like that before, and the question has come, you know, is that appropriate? is that appropriate for the question that was asked when the sales tax was passed? So that's, yeah.
I, Commissioner, I believe this next slide helps speak to that a little bit. And our, the language I remember very clearly, because I helped craft it, was just the workforce initiatives, workforce housing initiatives. And then for us to move forward, once we have that payoff, we're able to, to not only, we're able to start the redevelopment process of Carlson Plaza and keep the momentum around the downtown affordable housing campus. But we're going to spur development of the forty-seven public housing units. That doesn't mean we have to only build forty-seven units back there. It can include workforce housing. It could include additional space there. So I think that opens the door to different possibilities that this, this logjam that we're at right here, that being removed opens to, opens the door to redevelopment and workforce housing as well.
Aaron, what's the fiscal note that the city has for, for the towers?
That's, the recoverable loan or grant program that we did for the windows for the towers.
I thought we did something for the sewer across the bottom, too.
There was part of it, but it didn't get completely done. Some of the sewer did, but not all of the water line. But most of it was for the windows. And it was about nine hundred and eighty thousand, and MHA has been paying that back as, as we can, about sixty-two thousand a time. We just got funds in recently that we're, we have another payment due that we're trying to get caught up on that as well, but.
So twelve years or something?
Yeah, the, I think that, I think that payment, if I'm remembering the schedule, goes quite a ways. Goes well into twenty forties or so.
Okay, is there, was there an interest rate with that?
Good question. I, it was, it was a unique way that it was structured in that I don't know that there was an interest rate. There was some terms like patient lending, like being patient in the process. And I don't, I don't fully understand it, but that was crafted. Maybe Katie remembers? Anything about how that was put together? The, the loan repayment, or loan, the grant?
So we had to, it's not technically a loan.
Right.
It's a, because HUD wouldn't let us call it that, so it is a reimbursable grant.
Right.
Is how we had to structure it, but there can't be a penalty, and there's no interest for it because otherwise it would look too much like a loan, and HUD did not approve that.
That's my memory.
Just wondered, you know, what other things the city was?
You're helping in a big way on that. I, I think it's a good point. And that's another reason that we're coming back as partners. I think this is another, that was the high-rise it was dealt with, the mid-rise it needs to be dealt with, and they both are almost the same age. All right, and so the four percent Lytex, what's next for Carlson? KHRC accepts applications in two different rounds. I talked to our co-developer about what that looks like and applying. He's going to get back on the schedule, but it could be January or February, or the next round, I think, is June, July. Generally, twice a year, there's four percent tax credits available, or we could pursue a nine percent, but not likely by this January.
So could, could I just ask, so is anyone living in West Loop? Those are empty?
No, those are full.
Oh, those are full.
Well, I, they're occupied.
Yeah, okay, so.
And those, those tenants will, that's part of the FEMA process that we're trying to get it extended. Those folks would, if Sunflower Flats is able to be built, they would be relocated directly into Sunflower Flats.
Okay.
Rather than.
So do we have any problems with FEMA because of the flood possibility?
I can't speak to anything with FEMA at this point. I, I don't know if, I don't think we would have any problems, but Stephanie.
We don't have to move those people out in any. I mean, we have to move them out, but there's no pressure, or, I mean, it could rain six inches and.
So I think that's part of the, the conversation of where we're headed, and what Garrick's going to talk about is the relationship between Garden Grove and Sunflower Flats. It's a very tangled web of all these different connections. So Aaron's starting us out with the EPC buyout. That's kind of the, one of the, the steps in this. And then Garrick will speak more specifically on Sunflower Flats and, and the Garden Grove buyout project.
Okay, thanks.
Can I just ask as well, so Carlson Flats needs to be demolished?
Carlson Plaza needs demolished. It's determined to be obsolete. We had obsolescence surveyed done. And it's, so there's asbestos throughout the building. And to remediate for mold, you disrupt the asbestos, which causes all these other problems, and yes, demolitions the.
So the long-range plan, just to get, make sure I have.
Is to demolish and rebuild.
On that site?
On Carlson Plaza's site.
Okay, because Sunflower Flats is across the street, isn't it?
Correct.
So would, would both projects be ongoing at the same time?
Unfortunately, that we tried to try, make that work, but given the structures and the funding mechanisms and the sources and the entities involved, they won't be in tandem. Our board actually was trying to, and you can have efficiencies of cost, and, but it doesn't appear that that's going to work. So it, there'll be like a staggered year or so, because we won't know, we wouldn't, at the earliest, we wouldn't know if we got the award until the summer of next year.
For Carlson?
For Carlson. And building and construction for Sunflower Flats, you'll find out is, you know, going to be underway by then.
Okay, thank you.
All right, sorry, there's my questions.
Just a comment, Garden Grove was spot zoning.
Okay. Garrick, would you like to come up and let's?
I'll go ahead and make this full screen real quick. Awesome. Why am I not actually seeing that? Anyway, okay, Garrick Baker with Baker McMillan Architects. We have been working with Aaron and his team since February of twenty-three on this project, so. Like he said, we were awarded those tax credits in Ju-, or July, I guess. So that has spurred on a lot more discussion with this. I'm going to keep it really short and brief here. You all have that information in your packets and things. But again, just going to the site there, Sunflower Flats. Part of the pre-development agreement was that fifty percent would be given, or not given, would be allocated towards Sunflower Flats, and then fifty percent would remain as that parking lot. Also, within that stipulation was that the parking lot needed to be redeveloped to have at least the exact same amount of parking, but no less. And we are planning on achieving that goal, so we're not going to be losing any parking down there. And then we will also have twenty parking stalls for residents of the building. Just a quick street view here. This had gone in front of the Historic Resources Board, and I went back and I pulled the original comments made in twenty-one, I believe, and made sure to have those incorporated into that design, to where we were able to bring that back again in September. And that got their approval in that, so we did include that letter of approval in your packets there as well. Amenities, on the first floor, we're going to have things like a community room, community kitchen, so they can be serving meals out of there, mail kiosks, laundry facilities, so that they don't have to leave the building or anything like that. Leasing office, so if they have any questions or any issues or anything like that, they just hop in the elevator and go down to their leasing agent down there. Sixty-two single-bedroom units. Each one of them will have their own private balcony out there, along with two elevators, so that way if one goes down, we have a backup just in case. And then we did have an elevated patio space that was going to be private for the residents, so they didn't have to worry about the general public. In working, we're continuing to develop these plans, and our HBAC designer is working to get to where we have no rooftop units up there. So our mechanical penthouse will now become a second private patio for them. So we're creating amenities where we can and trying to make some savings as well. Again, very basic floor plan here. We do have that parking garage structured in the middle here. Two elevators, secure vestibules. That way then, maybe like after seven PM or something like that, only residents with a key card can get in there. So we're trying to keep this safe and secure for all of the residents, so they feel comfortable and at home. The Sunflower Room, as I've been liking to call it, is that community room. We do have some storage room. Maybe that becomes overflow activity space, arts and crafts rooms, things like that. And then we do have the fifty percent remaining for the parking lot. I believe there's like roughly fifty parking stalls there, and we're going to be putting fifty back. That will be used as a staging area, so we are anticipating that will get tore up. So if we're going to be damaging all of that, we're going to put it back. So that is in the plan right now as well. The upper levels, we do have plenty of units per each one. The fifth floor is the only one that's different. There are two fewer units up there, and we were going to dedicate that to that mechanical penthouse up there, but we no longer need that. So that will become a second rooftop terrace, and that's the main one there that also acts as covered parking for some of the residents as well. Per the, what they call their Qualified Allocation Plan, QAP, for the KHRC, we have certain requirements that we have to meet in order to gain that funding there. So each one of these, where you see like a little dash circle in there, that is an ADA turning radius in there, so. We're supposed to follow the Fair Housing Act. The International Building Code is a little more stringent. We're trying to follow the more stringent, so we know we meet the fair housing and IBC. So that way, at any point, if you have a resident that is maybe wheelchair-bound, they can fit into any one of the units. It's not that we have to have one that's make-ready or something like that. We're trying to make it as accessible as possible and welcoming to all kinds of residents in there. So we're just trying to hold ourselves to that standard there. Again, we do have the balconies, single-bedroom, ADA showers and everything, so those are roll-in. They don't have to step over a curb or anything like that, roll-under sinks and lavatories, also front-controlled ranges and hoods and things like that. So that's just our typical unit there. If we were to take a picture in the future, this is kind of what one of those typical units would look like. Nice and open to the kitchen there. There's kind of a coat closet here. Again, same room, just looking out, there would be the private patio out there. And then the kitchen's there. This little jet out here, that is actually kind of a built-in closet for some of our sustainability and energy-saving features. So we have hot water on demand, so rather than having like your forty-gallon hot water heater that you have to continually heat, these are on demand, so you're not continually heating up all of that water. So that's one of our energy-saving aspects there. We have low-flow fixtures, as well as putting occupancy sensors down in a lot of the main rooms. So if nobody's in there, we're not going to have the lights on. So just saving some resources there as well. And then at the very top of the roof, so if you remember, I'd said our HBAC contractor is getting all of these heating and cooling units within each one of the dwellings. That opens up our entire roof, so we did have some condensing units on the roof. But now we get to dedicate that entire space to solar panels. So that's roughly fourteen to sixteen thousand square feet of solar panels that we could have up there. So we're really trying to be as energy-efficient and return back to the clients as well. Typical bedroom unit. Really quickly, these were in your packets as well. This is that view from Pierre Street. As we are developing this and met with the Historic Resources Board, all of this kind of hardscape paving out here will go away. That gets returned back to green space. It also helps us meet the different grades and things like that. So we'll have street trees, grass, and everything like that, less hardscape there.
Can I just ask, where's the fire stairs? They're all in, within?
Yes, so whoops. So these would be kind of the fire stairs here, and then up on the second floor. So let's say you were in this unit here, you could go all the way down here. Then we will have area of refuge and everything to meet all of our life safety code issues. And then you will be brought, whoa, gotta get the right slide, brought down here. Due to the new MDC and everything, we do have to have like vision triangles. So anybody pulling, if this were the other way, vehicles would be able to see out and around the corner of the building safely. So we went ahead and just did that on all four corners of the building, so we thought those would be nice entries and exits. We've met with risk reduction. Earlier options, we did have them kind of exiting out into the garage space. We're not doing that now, so they can exit directly out onto the street or into the alley.
And we have, and our fire department has that ability to go if they need to get to somebody's balcony?
Yes, so.
Because these are older people.
Yep, so we will have many areas of refuge in each one of these. All of these hallways are going to have to be fire-rated, along with the stairwells. Each individual unit is fire-rated and everything, so. Again, we're following the International Building Code, which holds us to the same commercial standards across the board. So everybody should feel safe when entering and living there. Scroll down here. So this is kind of the view above the Boys and Girls Club, the view above the Houston Street Ballroom, and then a view of that parking lot there. So you can see this rooftop patio here or terrace, and then towards the back of here, you can start to see kind of that little recess there. That was going to be where we were going to hide all those condensing units, keep them out of view. They're not very attractive, so we're going to hide them up there, but now that will actually become a second rooftop terrace. As I mentioned, we did bring this to the Historic Resources Board because it was in that historic district. So here's what we're looking at regarding materials. We have not selected the final color by any means. This was just trying to make sure that we were kind of fitting within that general neighborhood and that area. So again, these columns out here go to creating that vision triangle, so vehicles pulling up to those corners can see through there, see any oncoming traffic or anything like that. Our schedule, back in September, HRB. Here we are in November at our city commission review. Tomorrow, we are meeting with community development for our pre-development meeting. If we need to come back for any follow-up meetings, we'll try and do that in December. And then hopefully by the second week of December, we're going to try and have all of our construction documents and things ready to submit to risk reduction. The goal behind all of that is to hopefully close on the property by the end of the year. So beginning January one, those time-constrained funds from the abode grant can start to be utilized, so we don't lose any of that. To kind of put that into perspective, KHRC says that they like to see their projects close within nine months. If we are successful in meeting this schedule, we will be doing it in five. So we are moving very, very quickly and trying to make sure we get everything crossed off there. And then March, April, somewhere in there, since the ground thaws, we'll go out and we'll do a groundbreaking construction. Just depends on how quickly we get all those materials and everything, and how quickly we can get folks on site. I'd like to see it sooner than summer of twenty-six, but that's just kind of what we're projecting rough right now. Lycos does have OCM builders who will be the general contractor on it, so any timeline, once we get into construction, it's kind of out of my hands time-wise, so it goes over to the general contractor at that point, and they can answer that a little bit better. And at that point, I'm going to. It was up there. So just kind of flying around Pierre Street here and then going down Fifth. So I apologize for all the shadows and everything, but seeing kind of the scale of the building. It will be shorter than the Civics Plus building, and definitely shorter than the Museum of Light and Art and everything, but. So again, flying over around towards that parking lot there. The current design does have a sidewalk that separates the parking lot from the building proper. That way, if folks need to go from front to back, they can without being out in the parking lot. And again, just going through one of the simple units here. Each one of the units is seven hundred square feet. That was one of our stipulations that we had to follow, but. And again, the ADA showers and everything. I've, do capital needs assessments for a lot of HUD properties. And one of the comments that I always hear from the residents is they really don't like the curbs of tubs and showers and things like that, so. and one of the comments that I always hear from the residents is they really don't like the curbs of tubs and showers and things like that, so we're not even including that in this one, it's just gonna be roll-in, um, and accommodate that way, but... So at this point, I'll go ahead and open it up, any questions?
Um, I just, they're all one-bedroom apartments?
One-bedroom apartments.
Is that what's currently in Carlson? Is, is that the standard or, I'm just thinking about, um-
Yeah, our, like Apartment Towers and Carlson are all one-bedroom units and/or studios and we've moved to, actually, half of Apartment Towers is studios and that's a less preferable situation for people, it's just less space. So we are trying to stick to the one-bedroom model. But, uh, Garden Grove one and two, where the, the replacement housing, those are all one-bedrooms.
Thank you. Commissioners?
I think the building looks great, I'm excited about it. I think that's a good, uh, design. I might have some side comments for you about a couple of things just from senior living that I'm happy to share and you can completely ignore later.
I, I appreciate the thoughtfulness and, um, I think I'm excited to have something like this, uh, go up, so, thanks.
John, do you have any comments for Garrick or, or, um-
I'd just like to, um, give some kudos to Erin and the staff there as well as the, the development group we're working with and also the Housing Authority, um, Board, because I just think this is a great project and I think the whole campus idea that this all plays into is gonna be great for that area, great for the people that are gonna be there. Cause this is very competitive to get this money to do it and one of the reasons that the Housing Authority got it is because of the location and the amenities and everything else gave us such a high score. So it's gonna be really good for those folks. And I think for the Housing Authority to be able to manage things, to have all those units in, um, this campus format is really gonna help with the, with the maintenance and with the customer service and able to, as we build these, you know, build in to have equipment there, places for the, for, you know, maintenance people, all that type of thing, I just think it's gonna be a real plus.
Great, thank you for pointing that out, John, I, I agree. I think it's going to be rea- a real advantage to have that housing cluster. Um, is there any comment from members of the public?
Uh, Josh Peruer, Executive Director, Habitat for Humanity of the Northern Flin Hills. I live at four-one-zero Fremont Street. Um, I just wanted to give, uh, kudos to this project and as I was sitting here listening, I was thinking how many times I heard Garrick say residents and talk about the people who are gonna live in these, uh, uh, these homes and who are gonna enjoy certain amenities. I think when you look at the structure, its, its form is, is thoughtful. It, it creates spaces for people to dwell. I mean, you could, you, you could fill up a lot more space by making that box pop out, but you created a lot more daylighting there, sorry, not addressing crowd members, um, the presenter. Uh, and, and I think that that is, uh, I, I kind of wish this item was, was much earlier in the agenda so folks could have seen that as, as an example of how thoughtful design and intentionality, um, can really elevate housing. So just very much appreciate that.
Thank you, Josh.
To the earlier, uh, comment about funding source, um, I do share some of the concerns about workforce housing funds. I know we've, we've talked about using them in a couple of applications. Those funds, just because their local flexibility, um, I know that, um, I worry that we, we, if we don't have that made permanent, we might be allocating these pretty regularly, um, when they can be used in an application that's, uh, not typical, the outside of the eighty percent AMI, that sixty to one-twenty AMI, we don't see that flexibility in that, in that AMI range. Um, but I think if there is a project that, that, um, would create high impact, it's this, so, thank you.
Thank you. Scott, any comments? Um, commissioners?
I think we don't have to make an actual motion, but I mean, I'm in favor of let's find a way to do what we need to do and, and figure out the funds and I think if City just wants to come back to us with what feels appropriate, I'm excited about it, so, good job, guys.
Yeah, I think this, this is, this would be a shame of a project to go down if we chose not to support this, um, with a, uh, pretty low amount of money.
Erin, thank you, um, it, do you have a time constraint as to, is it, did you say by March you need funding or-
The EPC funding is actually December as far as, as the regular payment and schedule, but, um, I can work with city staff and, and figure out what makes the most sense.
Can we leave it, charge you with that to find appropriate source of funding, come back and let us know?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, we are going to thank you for your patience and for staying, uh, the course. Um, we are going to recess into an executive session to discuss a matter involving non-elected personnel. In order to protect the privacy of the persons involved pursuant to KSA seventy-five dash four-three-one-nine-B-one, we will resume our meeting at ten past ten. Oh, sorry, is there a motion to move into executive session?
I move we do that.
Seconded.
Actually, the statute requires you to read the motion exactly.
Take it back, Katie. Um, I move we recess into executive session to discuss a matter involving a non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy of the persons involved pursuant to KSA seven-five dash four-three-one-nine-B-one and to resume the open meeting at ten-ten PM in the city commissioner room. Persons included in the executive session are city commissioners, city manager Danielle Newland, deputy city manager Jason Hillgers, and city attorney Katie Jackson.
Seconded.
Call the roll, Commissioner McCullough?
Yes.
Commissioner Opel?
Yes.
Commissioner Motta?
He said yes.
He said yes. Uh, Commissioner Mitten?
Yes.
Mayor Adamcheck?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
That is a perfect square footage size. That's seven, sixteen, something, yeah.
Hey, how you doing? Yes?
Okay.
I'm sorry.
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 Microphone, if nobody's here.
We have to read that whole thing again.
So.
Well, we gotta.
We gotta go back a lot.
Yeah, he's coming.
It all depends on you, Jason.
I thought we should order pizza.
I don't know that any place is open, Karen. No, maybe there. So are we? Am I?
Not yet.
Do we have to come?
Yes.
Back, or are we just extending?
If you're extending, you need to go.
So.
You still read the whole thing.
I move we, do I say recess or extend?
Recession.
Recession to executive dis, executive session. Ooh. Discuss a matter involving non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy of the persons involved pursuant to KSA 75-4319B1, and to resume the open meeting at ten twenty?
One.
Ten twenty-one?
Let's see, ten twenty?
PM. What, what?
You want to do ten twenty? We can do ten twenty-five.
Ten twenty-five PM in the City Commission Room. Persons included in the executive session are the City Commissioners, City Manager Danielle Doolin, Deputy City Manager Jason Hilders, and City Attorney Katie Jackson.
Seconded.
Call the roll, please.
The woo and everything.
Oh, yeah. It's all right.
Commissioner Minton made the motion, and Commissioner Opel seconded. Can you call the roll, please?
Okay. Commissioner Opel?
Yes.
Commissioner Motta?
Oh, he's on the phone in the other room.
Yes.
He's, he said yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Minton?
Yes.
Mayor Adamcheck?
Yes.
Commissioner McCullough?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Yeah, you can just go back to the recording.
Yeah.
The statute requires you to put every word you exactly say in the minutes.
Sorry.
Executive session motion. So I was gonna.
I'm sorry. 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 I'm sorry.
I'm glad you didn't.
I mean, that would be hilarious, right? Sure, there's a work ethic thing in there.
Are you eligible for that?
Huh?
Are you eligible for that?
Brenda, sorry that I.
Took me a moment. I thought you said we can do a cloud session.
Oh, so I'm so sorry. I was on my penmanship.
Well, my brother just sent me a note today that he had changed his email to a cloud application. It was on my mind. Thank you. We are resuming, we have just terminated our executive session. We are resuming open meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn?
We did not make any.
We did not take any. We did not take any action during our executive meeting.
I tried to signal it. We're done.
Yeah.
Yeah. I move to adjourn the November 5th, 2024 City Commission meeting.
Second.
Will you call the roll, please, Brenda?
Commissioner Motta?
I think he left the computer here now.
Commissioner Minton?
Yes.
Mayor Adamcheck?
Yes.
Commissioner McCullough?
Yes.
Commissioner Opel?
Yep.
Motion carries four to zero.